Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I see so many new faces. Thank you for attending 135th session of the 11th council. Tonight, I would like to call the meeting to order at 6:01. Can I have roll call, please? I'm sorry, I'm going a little too fast tonight. At this time, Councilman Parker, would you introduce the member of the clergy that will be giving the invocation?
Thank you, Brother President Pro Tem. Good evening, everyone. Our invocation this evening will be given to us by Pastor Katharlee James of the East Side Church of God.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Father, for this council. We thank you for this city. We ask right now that you would look on us today with your mercy and your kindness, Lord. Give us the wisdom and the strength that we need to make decisions that you would be pleased with. We ask your blessings on the audience and those who are here to discuss the issues that they are concerned about. We ask your blessings upon this city, Father. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
At this time, can we please stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we want to remember our residents who passed since our last meeting. Dori Turner, Iceland Phillips, Leo Henry Walker, Mixon Taylor, Richard Dewan, Kalinius James Jones, Diane Williams, Quentrel Lee Burns, Teresa Ann Johnson. These are our neighbors. We'd like to offer our condolences to these families. Let us take a moment to silently honor them. Thank you. Clerk Doria, please call the roll.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGuinness. Nicholson. Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President, you have a quorum.
I thank you, Clerk Doria. At this time, I need a motion and a second to excuse council members Rutherford, McGuinness, and Nicholson for personal reasons from this evening's meeting. It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman James. Clerk roll call, please.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Foyers, no nays.
That motion passes. I need a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman James to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Clerk, I need a roll call to approve tonight's agenda.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Foyers, no nays.
That motion passes. Next on the item for tonight is approval of the consent agenda. And what that is, is that things that are typically just quick business items that doesn't need a lot of deliberation, we usually put into the consent agenda. So, we have one item, March 12, 2024, City Council Meeting Minutes. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker and seconded by Councilwoman James to approve tonight's consent agenda. Roll call, Clerk Doria.
James.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Foyers, no nays.
That motion pass. Please forgive my glasses on if I see any elected officials in the audience tonight. Do I see any? I don't see none in present, so I'll skip that of recognition of elected officials. We have a special presentation, update on Franklin Road construction project from Mayor Grimaldi on the Franklin Road construction project. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Carrington. Just very briefly, I wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could to get the word out in the community about an upcoming construction project. As I think everyone knows, Franklin Road was repaved last year, and that project has immensely improved the ability to drive that road without hitting a slew of potholes. And so, we're very pleased with the repaving job that occurred on Franklin Road last year. But we knew that there was still some additional work that needed to be done to fully wrap that work up. And in particular, that work involved some of the underground stormwater sewer infrastructure on that road. I've mentioned this in a number of community meetings since the Franklin Road project wrapped up last year. But we have been waiting for the contractor to inform us about when that final work will be done and wrapped up. They notified us last Thursday, so really last minute, that they wanted to commence that work this week. Actually, they wanted to start yesterday, and I said, well, hold on. We want to make sure we have a little bit of time to get the word out in the community. So, we have pushed that back a week. But I want everyone to know that Franklin Road will be under construction starting this coming Monday, March 25. It'll be down to one lane only. Construction will begin on March 25, and it will wrap up on April 19, weather permitting. The good news about that schedule is that that work will be totally wrapped up on Franklin. Again, we know this is going to be an inconvenience while it's happening. But that work on Franklin will be totally wrapped up before the work starts on Bagley and Gulf Drive. Because the work on Gulf Drive and Bagley will be starting around May 1. We'll certainly let folks know when we have more information about that. We're excited again about that work happening on Gulf Drive and Bagley because that really needs repaving. But we also know that it'll be an inconvenience while that construction works going on. So, we appreciate everyone's patience with that Gulf Drive and Bagley work that'll be starting around May 1. Again, though, I wanted to make sure that people know that Franklin will be back under construction to wrap up the project that was mostly completed last year. It'll be back under construction starting this coming Monday, March 25 through April 19. So, with that, President Pro Tem, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Grimaldi. At this time, do council have any questions I open up for discussion concerning that special presentation? Hearing none. Again, thank you, Mayor Grimaldi, for bringing that to our attention to get the word out concerning those road updates. At this time, we have agenda address. You have two minutes to address the council concerning agenda items. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak during agenda address?
Yes, first up is Dr. Deidre Waterman. Seeing that she's not here, Carlton Jones. Make sure your microphone is on.
Okay, yeah. Good evening, council, mayor, and administration. Couple of things I want to inquire about and really speak to. We've got a couple of items on there, the youth center and also the anti-violence approval. I think we all can appreciate that we want to see the youth center move forward, and we truly, truly appreciate any effort moving it forward. I think one of the things that we're still somewhat concerned, when I say we, collectively, I'm involved with several community organizations. And sometimes, it's the lack of clarity of information, especially when there's so many different moving parts. So, what I will say is, I did look over the information pertaining to the youth center, and I need to get a good, clear understanding myself of what is the actual building cost? And do we have that fund secured for the building costs? Because it seems as if though we're associating services to a building cost, and I just want to make sure that we have the funds available. And also, just the aspect of, you know, my past experience in trying to understand when we say we was going to go into having a construction manager at risk. And the process of bringing on the AE prior to the construction manager, it's a little concerning, but I just need more information to be clear on it. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Rosalyn Northcross.
Good evening, mayor, council, and everyone else. I'm here because we in District One are concerned that residential properties being sold by the city not be developed, remain developed as residential. The city, we want the city to make sure it does its due diligence to make sure that there are no buildings being constructed that masquerade as homes. We are seeing an uptick in car enthusiasts wanting to build garages that are close to M1. And with vacant land in District One being very close to M1, that's a great possibility. And we just want to say, please do your due diligence when you're selling this property to make sure it remains residential and not garages that will be used, that will be masquerading as homes. Thank you very much.
Next is Mr. Tamika Ramsey. Mr. Chuck Johnson. Ms. Darlene Clark.
Good afternoon, administration, council. My question is, actually, two things, and Mr. Jones attached to that, about the cost of this for the construction manager. Question is, is that can you give a starting date and an ending date for the construction manager to be here? Will he be here after the construction? Or will he handle all the city of Pontiac construction projects? Secondly, about the lots, the vacant lots that you have up for sale. Knowing that Pontiac is well over the amount, over 50% landlords and investors. Questions is, once an investor who's renting out property to tenant, he buys the property that's next to these empty lots. Are you going to allow him to revert that and to solidate that into one lot? Or is the condition just to build on that one lot, opposed to tearing down and joining lots? If so, can you give clarity to the residents of the city of Pontiac, the intent of what type of houses that is expected to go there if they're far be over 800 square feet?
Ms. Gloria Miller. That concludes agenda address.
Thank you, Councilman Goodman. And this is our segue into our first agenda item, public hearing on the sale of vacant city home parcels. Any member of the public can speak during a public hearing. You'll be given three minutes. But when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record before you begin speaking. So, I turn this over to the administration.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I want to turn it over to our Economic Development Manager, Deborah Younger. As we've discussed at past City Council meetings, we're very eager to make sure that the many hundreds of vacant city-owned lots are turned into productive use. And so, we have a program where those homeowners who own owner-occupied housing in neighborhoods and live next to a city-owned lot can acquire that as a side lot at a heavily discounted price. And a number of members of the public, residents of the city, have taken advantage of that opportunity, which is great. But we are not limiting the sale just to those folks, although those are the people we're giving preference to, but also to other individuals as well. And Economic Development Manager, Younger, why don't you take it away? I know you may have heard some of the comments made by members of the public, so you might want to speak to that as well.
Sure. Thank you, mayor and city council. The vacant land policy, we developed a land disposition policy that addresses how we will, in fact, sell lots. It is on the city's website under Economic Development, Property Sales. So, the policies by which we will sell lots is on the website, as well as applications for lots. There's two applications, one for side lot. Side lot means you live next door to it, and you want to combine it with your lot. There's also an application for redevelopment lots. Redevelopment lots are just that, lots that are going to be redeveloped, either residentially or commercially. Most of the lots we have are, in fact, residential. There are a few that are commercial. In order to buy a redevelopment lot, you must enter into a development agreement with the city. So, your concern about posing, garage posing as houses, we hope to, through a development agreement, work towards not having that happen. The lot and what's going to be built on it still has to go to plan commission, plan review. So, we've tried to build safeguards so that we will not have people dupe us. I mean, we can all be duped. But we've put into place policies, procedures. You have to enter into a purchase and development agreement if you are going to build on the lot. And then, we will monitor that, and we can obviously, as part of the development agreement, we can take the lot back from you if you do not conform to what you agreed to in the purchase and development agreement. So, we will monitor that. So far, all the lots we have sold have been, with the exception of one development, that was the Bridges Development, where we sold several parcels on Orchard Lake Road. Most of the lots we have sold so far have been for vacant side lots. The Bridges property that we, on Orchard Lake, we have a purchase and development agreement. The lots will revert back to the city if they do not conform to the use intended. They also have to go through site plan and zoning review for those lots. Some that are individual lots may not have to go through site plan and planning review if it's sewn properly. But we will monitor and make sure that whatever they said they were going to build is, in fact, built. Tonight, we are having public hearing. These are all side lots that we're selling, meaning the neighbor next door wants to buy it. As part of the process, we are, in fact, we are, we being the city, is doing the purchase agreement in the case of side lots, a quitclaim deed. We are also to ensure that this happens. We, the city, is recording the deed to make sure that it gets recorded because a lot of times, people forget to record the deeds for whatever reason. And then, finally, once the deed is recorded, we give it, we will give it to the planning division to do a lot combination so that we make sure that the lot is combined. So, we are going to handle the process from beginning to end to ensure that, in fact, we are returning these properties to a productive reuse and that policies and procedures are followed. So, we're not leaving it up to residents to do it. We are doing all of the work. In the past, oftentimes, you just got your quitclaim deed, and you went along your way. We find people come in all the time that never recorded that deed. So, we are going to, I'm working now with the county equalization to be able to e-file and record electronically. But at any rate, we handle the process from beginning to end. Tonight, before you are some side lots that we wish to sell to the adjoining neighbor. We make sure and verify that the person buying the lot is actually a resident of the parent lot. We call the primary resident the parent lot. So, the parent lot, we confirm that they live there, that that is not a rental property that they're buying the side lot for. So, they have to provide us evidence, typically driver's licenses and some other verification, that, in fact, that is where they live. So, tonight, we have a few vacant side lots that we're interested in selling. We're bringing them in batches. We're contacting, we have a list of people who, over the years, wanted to buy side lots, and then, we stopped selling them. So, we're going back contacting the people on the list to see if there's some interest in buying that side lot. So, those are who we're contacting first. And of course, people are coming to us now that we have everything online. We're getting applications online. So, you'll probably see me here quite regularly trying to sell lots. And the process is, is that we hold a public hearing. So, two weeks or 10 days before the public hearing, I come and ask city council to put those lots on, just on for a public hearing. At the time that I come and ask for the public hearing, I show the lots. So, you've got two weeks to see what lots I'm talking about before the public hearing. Then, we hold a public hearing, which is an additional chance for the public to have a look at what, in fact, we're doing. And then, finally, after the public hearing, we have to come back and ask council to approve the sale of the lots. So, tonight is just the public hearing. We're informing the public of our intent to sell these lots. And after this public hearing, I will have to come back with a resolution asking city council to allow me to sell the lots. So, there are about three steps in the process that the community can be informed and can share their comments and concerns. So, we've tried to make this so that this ample opportunity for community input. Having said that, I'll briefly go through the side lots that we're wishing to sell. There's a list of them. I have some aerial pictures of the maps of the lots, some I couldn't get, and a picture of the lot. So, the first lot is Blaine Avenue, and it did not have an address. Some lots are not addressed, so this one did not have an address. But this is, in fact, the lot on Blaine. Again, I could not get an aerial. This is the only picture I could get. The second lot is 234 South Shirley Avenue. That's a picture of it. That's what it looks like. And next one is 66 Nelson Street. That's what it looks like. So, we're trying to show you, too, that we're trying to clean up some of these vacant lots by selling them, and hopefully, the property owner will maintain them. And that's where it is located. The next one is 268 Luther Avenue. That's the lot. That's, the colored lot is where it is. The next one is 32 Bennett. This is a picture of the lot. When I can get the pictures, and when I'm not on crutches, because I'm ever so graceful, I'll go take pictures when we can. But oftentimes, we can get aerials.
Excuse me. Please, everybody in, just in the chambers, please silence your phones. So, please take a few moments and look at your phones and make sure they silence. Please continue.
And there's where it is. We have, the next lot is 494 Bloomfield. That's the picture of the lot. That's where it is. And the last is Luther. Again, this one does not have an address, but that's a picture of the lot. The end.
Well, definitely, thank you for the presentation. At this time, council, any questions?
Yeah.
Hearing none. I just want to thank you guys for, to work on this particular project to make sure that we understand what the city owns. And because I know some years ago, we really didn't have an understanding of what the city actually owns when it came to vacant property. So, this is a great opportunity for homeowners to buy the side lots. I believe that price is, what, $500 if I'm mistaken? And the city is actually doing all the work for you. If you had to do this on your own, it'd cost way more than $500 to consolidate property and go through the process of the property transfer. So, again, I thank the city. So again, I thank the city and administration for working on this. Next item on our agenda is the Planning Division.
Point, point of order.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got to go to, I got to go to the public hearing.
Right.
I will officially open the public hearing at 6:26. Please state your name and address when you come to the podium. Anyone can speak at a public hearing. And please forgive me for trying to get out of here early.
Good evening. My name is Robert Bass. I live at 499 Highland. And I just forgot one quick question. You're talking about the side lots, but what about a budding lots? Is it the same process for budding lots to your property as it is for side lots? Because it would be an extension to your property. So could you explain that for me at some point?
Darlene Clark, 506 Nebraska. Once again, this is a question that the administration did not answer. Let me ask this question first. Is there, if the lots are not sold by the neighboring party, is it open to the neighborhood? Like, can anyone on that particular street buy that lot? It's one of the questions that was brought to our attention. Another question that's brought to our attention, can you give clarity on the square footage of the home? Since transparency is your goal for the remaining of your two years, give transparency, what is the square footage of the homes that you expect to be on these lots? And once again, are the, the people that's living in their homes, are they able, once they combine a lot or purchase a lot, are they allowed or will they be allowed to tear down the existing home to build bigger homes?
Thank you.
Dr. Director Waterman, I believe the process for public hearings just states your address. I'm at 312 Ottawa Drive, Pontiac. I also have a question, or have a statement, rather, to make about public hearings and the process of the public hearing, particularly in this particular issue. And one of those things is, generally, when you have a public hearing, this is the way we've, they've been doing it ever since, I'm in Pontiac, or Planning Commission does the same way. But in the public hearing, you need to have the information about which the public is speaking. And in this instance, you look in the packet, there's no information. It's blank. So the things that Ms. Younger just told you, those are the things that should be in the packet. Not everybody comes and hears her talk at the council meeting. So that's what the importance of the packet is, the public document. So those kinds of things should be in there. And the questions are that are arising now, because people want to know what the process is, and that's why the questions are, and that's what should be in the packet for a clearly thought-out and program. One of those things is, these are side lots, and what, if you're giving priority to people who live, the house next door, who've been caring for the property all these years without owning it, has there been any special way that the Economic Development Department is going to notify those people and at least give them notice that they have the first right of refusal? All right? I think that's worth making that effort, because not all of them will come here and see that at the council meeting and know that their, a lot next door to them is on the list. Second thing is, what if the next-door neighbor doesn't want the property and other people can bid on it? What happens if there's more than one person who bids on it? You said now it's $1,000, but what, is there going to be allowed to be a bid so that people can bid higher if they want to get, there's some debate about who gets the property? What is the process for doing that? Okay? So that's not outlined here. So in terms of a fully thought-out cogent program, which you're not going to run into problems with later on, you really need to have that set out. That needs to be in the packet every time this is on a public hearing, so that people have something to react to and are not just looking at a blank page trying to figure out what the process is.
Thank you, Ms. Waterman.
Rosalyn Northcross, 168 Astwood Street. My question about the property sale is, once the property has been combined with the, an existing neighbor's property, can it later be undivided? Because property values are going up. And so if you buy the side lot next to you and a year or two later, you see where you can double, triple, quadruple your money, can you undivide that lot and sell it singular? Or once you buy it, does it have to stay combined?
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jackie Barnett, and I am from Lancaster Village, and my address is 1140 Amos. And we're here today, I'm not alone, but I do have a team. And a lot of the ladies that are here are, and gentlemen that are here, are here for the first time. Our property has a flair right now. We're not pointing fingers at anyone, but we do have some concerns about what's happening with our property.
All right. I don't want to cut you off.
Cut me off.
Because we had a public hearing for the sale of city lots.
Okay.
But when we come up to public comment, and I know you guys are here for the first time.
Okay.
Then you'll be given the floor, and you'll have three minutes to talk about.
So we're not on lots, be on lots right now?
No, only on lots right now.
Okay, that's it. All right.
But we got you.
That's good stuff. That's good stuff. She was ready. Yeah. I, I want to kind of follow up on what, okay, yeah, Carlton Jones, 1323 Oaklawn Drive, Pontiac, Michigan. Yeah, yeah, this is a public hearing about those lots. You know, I, I understand that they're going to require those homeowners to attach those lots. Is that saying that they cannot bill on those lots when they attach them? Yeah, that's a question. Because if somebody else buys a lot, they can bill on it. But we're going to require that homeowner who buys the attached lot and they attach it, can they still bill on it? I'm not quite sure. And if we're eliminating the possibility for them to bill on it and letting somebody else come and buy it and bill on it, I don't think that's quite fair. So I'm just not quite clear, while we're saying we're making them attach it, is that meaning that they can't bill on it then unless it's unattached? Question. And I also want to say that we are very concerned with R1 districts, residential districts, when you do sell those lots, and as Sister Northcross was saying, we just need to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to protect existing R1 districts for the protection that we look for for R1, which is supposed to be the highest protected residential district in the zoning code. So pole barns are not acceptable in R1. No ifs, ands, and buts. So we just got to be very conscious that we don't let those type of things happen. We know over in District 1 that there is a lot of that happening or attempting to happen, and we're very adamant not to let that happen in R1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do we have anybody else that want to speak at this public hearing? Going once? Going twice? Okay. I am on close the public hearing at 6:35 PM. Also for the administration, do you guys want to address some of those questions at this moment, or you want to do it later into, you want to take a point of privilege?
We, we can. I don't know if Economic Development Manager, Deborah Younger, is still here. I do know we have our Planning Manager, Mark Yandrick, still here. But I think it's, the person who really can best address these questions is our Economic Development Manager. She seems to have stepped out.
Okay, no problem.
We might be able to have her rejoin, although she might be on her way home.
No, if she stepped out, is on her way home, at a future date, we can answer some of those questions for the public.
Okay, that sounds great.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the, from the Planning Division, is the adoption of an ordinance to amend the City of Pontiac zoning ordinance to define minor and major temporary uses and to regulate mobile food vendors to include, amend Article 2, Chapter 2, Section 2.204, Table 2, amend Article 2, Chapter 5, Section 2.542, amend Article 2, Chapter 5, Section 2544, add Article 2, Chapter 5, Section 2.551, mobile food packlet, amend Article 7, Chapter 2, Section 7.207. This was deferred from February 20th meeting. There's already been a motion of second to adopt this ordinance on February 20th. So we'll turn over to Mayor Grammer for context.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will, in a moment, turn it over to our Planning Manager, Mark Yandrick. But just to introduce the topic, we did have three town halls, and we had good turnout at those town halls, mostly from food vendors. And based on some of the feedback that was given at those town halls, we do have one or two tweaks to the ordinance that we're proposing. Those proposed tweaks, just one tweak.
Yep.
That proposed tweak was included in City Council's board packet, and that tweak is to extend the allowed hours of operation for food vendors, at least some food vendors, from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM, is my understanding. So that was a direct result of the town halls, and we really appreciated the opportunity to put those on. That was a suggestion from Council and a very wise suggestion from Council. So I want to thank Council for making that suggestion. Most people who came to the town halls, who were food vendors, seemed very satisfied and with the proposed ordinance and didn't have many concerns. But this was one of the suggestions that came out of it. And with that, why don't you walk us through the proposal, let me imagine.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, Protam. I have a presentation about the zoning and tax, zoning text and map amendment that you have before you. This is a citywide ordinance. It does establish one overlay district, and it, the request is for amendments to regulations and process for mobile food vendors and temporary uses. So on the screen right now really is the, this ordinance's life cycle. It started informational session in September with Planning Commission. The first reading from City Council was heard in November. We did get some feedback from City Council at that first reading. There was a consideration at the February 20th meeting where it was tabled, where City Council provided some additional feedback to city staff and administration, and then tonight is the second reading for your consideration of the adoption. So some background information, the city has an annual mobile food vendor license program that's already established, but has very little zoning regulations for the time, place, and manner of these mobile food vendors outside of temporary events. The regulations that are, that exist are more for prohibitions than guidance for these land uses and the operations of the mobile food vendors. Additionally, the city desires to clarify the difference between special events, which is its current title, and temporary uses for the public and event organizers to make it easier for applicants to proceed through the application process. So just to highlight some of the changes that have occurred to this ordinance, or some that have occurred in general since November 14th, again, as the mayor mentioned, three town halls were held within the city on the week of March 4th on this ordinance, and each of those had some great dialogue between the mayor, myself, and really the, the interested attendees, most of which were mobile food vendors. The city proposes one amendment based on feedback from the town hall regarding operating hours of mobile food vendors in commercial districts. I will mention that throughout this presentation. But additionally, from the November feedback, we've had, the city's had some conversations with Central Multicultural La Familia, and they've dispersed to their contingencies. We had conversations with T. Ramsey and Associates. We had discussions with a few food truck owners, and we've taken this to Parks and Rec Subcommittee and Housing Economic and Planning City Subcommittee for additional guidance and review before this comes back for second reading. So this is really what the city has done since this first reading on November 14th. So this is probably the most important slide of this whole entire presentation, and a lot of the questions from the communities, what is this ordinance and what does it do? This slide establishes, A, that all mobile food vendors must get an annual city license, and that already exists today. It kind of confirms that. It shores that up within the ordinance. But B is something new, and it is the location of mobile food vendors. The property owner or event organizer must get one of the four zoning certificates for for mobile, mobile food vendors to operate. I have the numbers there. I'm going to go through each of them, but then I've got subsequent slides where the numbers are at the top. So number one is a temporary use for a mobile food vendor location permit for an annual zoning permit for this location on a multifamily or non-residential property. Number two is an existing one. It's for a temporary use major for a special event for a limited period of time. Now, major event, we're also clarifying, so we're consistent with how the city applies this for different event organizers, so those regulations are part of this as well. Number three, temporary use minor for a smaller special event with a limited period of time. And again, that currently exists today, but this shores that up, says what qualifies, what doesn't. And then we are establishing a zoning certificate process for a mobile food parklet, and that is a new land use that we are introducing that I will share on some subsequent slides. So really, if you are a mobile food vendor, you need to make sure that you have the license on A and that you're operating under a permit from, under B, under one of those four. Now, many of those are going to be, the zoning certificate, it's going to be drawn by the property owner, or it's going to be drawn by the event organizer. There may be situations that the property owner wants or elects to have the mobile food vendor get the permit on behalf of the property owner, and then that may be an individual situation, but most of these should be acquired by the, the property owner. So there are some general regulations before we get into each of these. So all mobile food trucks must get an annual license from the City of Pontiac through municipal code, and an annual inspection from the Waterford Township Fire Department, and then this also includes the necessary things from the state and from the county health department. All food trucks and parts thereof should be located a minimum of 35 feet from a fueling pump. And anything that is for a temporary event, and that would be number two and three from that list, doesn't have to adhere to the zoning regulations, the, the, the mobile food vendor regulations for that zoning district. What are those? I'll have it on the next slide. Noise and speakers are also restricted to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which is consistent with the city's noise ordinance from the municipal code. So the annual mobile food vendor location permit, you know, how does this function? How does this operate? This ordinance gives the ability that in different zoning districts in the city, that there'd be different hours of operation and hours that a food truck can operate. So I'm going to go through each of these one by one, if you give me just a moment. Okay. The laser point is not working, so I'm just going to go down the list one by one. So the top one is R1 and R2. These are single-family and two-family residential dwelling units. These would only be permitted at parks and community centers or under a temporary use event. So if there was a short-term event that was approved, that it would be allowed to happen. So there would not be hours per day or operations per day for a mobile food vendor in residential neighborhoods. For R3 and R4, which is multifamily, it would be permitted up to six hours a day and between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Now, as an example of this, if an apartment complex wanted to get an annual mobile food, this location permit, they could get it, and they could have a different vendor come on Mondays and Tuesdays and Wednesdays and Thursdays. So that wouldn't necessarily be on the mobile food vendor, it'd be on the property owner or the apartment complex to, to pull that permit. Now, the third one down is the, our business corridors. It's in the C0, C1, C3, C4 zoning districts, as well as TC, which is Town Center, CC, which is Civic Center, and our mixed-use district, which is MUD. And this would be permitted up to 10 hours a day, and what was originally proposed is from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Now, going through these town halls, we had discussions with mobile food vendors that operate on these districts within Auburn Avenue and University and Perry and Baldwin, and their feedback to the city is, hey, we're already operating here, and we're oftentimes operating at 11:00 PM, because that's when the residents are coming out, particularly in the peak summer hours. And so the city's administration has provided a motion in today's pack, and I'll bring this up at the end, that would allow in these zoning districts on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and City of Pontiac recognized holidays, that the operations would be allowed to continue to 11:00 PM. So if there's any questions about that, we can speak about that at the end of this presentation. Now, moving on, the C2 district is the downtown district. These would be permitted between 8:00 AM and 3:00 AM. This, the 3:00 AM aligns with the closing of bars, having place for people to get food after hours, but also the, the approved marijuana ordinance for consumption lounges. And while that's not open, a consumption And while that's not open, a consumption lounge can also be open till 2:00 a.m. So this allows someone to get food at a mobile food vendor downtown till 3:00 a.m. Now, the next is I1, M1, or IP1, M1 and M2. This is our industrial districts, and many of these are employers in the city that employ many people. And so for a business that's there, it's actually sometimes advantageous for them occasionally or regularly to bring in food trucks as a service to their employees, so they don't have to travel sometimes to get food if they've not brought their lunch or whatever meal they're taking. So this would actually allow up to two mobile food vendors under one, on one permit, and it would be up to 10 hours a day and between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Now, the two at the bottom are for the mobile food parklet overlay district and the mobile food parklets. If it's not located downtown, it would be allowed to be open till 9:00 p.m., and if it's downtown, it would allow, be allowed to be open until 3:00 a.m. So let's talk about temporary uses. This is, again, different than the, the previous slides on the mobile food vendor locations. So a major use is any use that is established for a fixed period of time, that is generally not appropriate for the zoning district on a long-term or continuous basis, which is open to the public and is expected to generate a crowd of more than 200 individuals, or if the planning division determines the event is likely to acquire additional safety precautions, including coordination with police and fire services. A temporary use should be considered major if any of the one of the following are present at the event. Any of these would trigger, any one of them. 200 or more individuals at the event, three or more mobile food vendors or commercial vendors, consumption of alcohol on the premise, temporary stages for concerts and/or performances, multiple entertainment areas, one large entertainment area, and fireworks. Now, private events that are not open to the public are exempt from the zoning ordinance but are still required to file any applications with the building department, the fire department, and the sheriff's office. So as part of this being larger events, this just reiterates the need for insurance policies and really to hold the city indemnified and hold harmless and really protect the taxpayers for these larger events. So this is very similar to what's already in place now, but this just strengthens that ordinance. Now, minor events are the contrary. It's the same type of use established for a fixed period of time, generally not appropriate for the zoning district on a long-term or continuous basis. These can include farm stands, sidewalk sales, commercial-related events that expect 200 less people, and these events can total up to 30 days in a calendar year per property, and these days can be consecutive or non-consecutive days, but must be established under this minor zoning permit. And this chart on the right is showing those seven uses, that if any one of those are, are proposed, then it would trigger that major event. But as long as it doesn't meet any of those seven, it, it can proceed as a minor event. This takes less review with fire and police and less coordination with the city. The minor amendment proposes a required refundable deposit if trash is cleaned up and no other public resources are needed. So essentially, this just protects the city. If we, we need to expend resources to clean up the site from an event, that money would not be refunded, but otherwise it would be refunded to the applicant. Garage and estate sales, as part of this proposal, would be required to get a temporary use permit in the same, it'd be considered a minor event. However, the fees for these would be waived, and the city recognizes the garage and estate sales are an important part of a residential zoning district. A property may have up to two events lasting up to three consecutive days in a calendar year on a residential property. What the city is trying to do by enforcing this is we want to make sure there's not a continuous garage and estate sale going on, because we don't want commercial operations on a residential property. It should be mainly residential and not commercial. So this, for garage and estate sales, the fee is waived, but a permit is required, and an interested residential property owner can obtain that rather quickly from the city's planning department, so. I did want to identify, again, this is from two and three again, there's just a few exemptions in the zoning ordinance. City-sponsored temporary uses, this is, you know, really, you're exempt from getting the temporary use permit, and it really helps the mobile food vendors, you know, as long as they're licensed for the city, would be able to, to operate. Funeral processions do not need a temporary use permit. And then private gatherings such as weddings, graduation parties, and similar events that are held on private property that the event is not for pecuniary gain or profit, would qualify as a private event and really would not need to secure a temporary use permit. So we just wanted to clearly differentiate that for what is needed for a temporary use permit and what is not. Let's get to number four, which is, to me, is the fun one. Let's talk about mobile food parklets. This is an example from another city, another state that I've actually been to that functions very well as a parklet. It's an establishment of a permanent location of mobile food vendors. While the mobile food vendors may be temporarily at the site, the site contains permanent features of parking, lighting, electrical, and other elements. This ordinance establishes that the overlay district, as part of this ordinance, is proposed in the downtown Woodward and West Huron Street corridors. A property owner may apply through an administrative site plan for this parklet, which establishes a permanent site within this overlay, or one of the overlay districts. While the owner does not need a temporary zoning permit each year, their administrative site plan would qualify for that, the mobile food vendor must be licensed and inspected each year, which is similar to all mobile food vendor operations in the city. A permanent curb separation between food trucks, pedestrians, and vehicles, as well as permanent electrical connect, electrical connections are required, and benches and other related optional consum, for optional consumption of the food are also required as part of this. Now, I wanted to identify the three locations listed in blue. So number one is downtown. Everything inside the loop, inside that blue area, is in the first overlay district. The second is the Woodward Avenue. So everything in blue on both sides of the street, so even when you are downtown, if there's a property on the outside of the loop, it is part of this proposed overlay district, and you'd be able to cite a, a mobile food parklet there. And then the third and last is the West Huron Street corridor on the west side of town. So these are the three overlay districts that are proposed as part of this ordinance. So, and enforcement after, so for violations, the, we don't have anything in place outside of our normal process for violations. So after two building-fire code enforcement or zoning violations in a rolling 12-month period, the mobile food vendor is prohibited from operating in the city for six months, starting with the third violation. We would still cite in a normal process like we do anything else for the first and second violations, but at the third, they would actually be prohibited from operating in the city. And we hope this does not happen, but this does protect the city to ensure that this is an enforceable ordinance. Let's talk about fees. I, I want to start out by saying no fees are proposed to be changed as part of this ordinance. The minor temporary use and annual mobile food vendor location applications that we're discussing are using the zoning compliance application, which is the basic standard application, and has the minimum zoning application fee at $150. City council, as a matter of practice, reviews and approves fees every June as part of the annual budget program, and again, there's nothing being proposed to change tonight. The current fees for mobile food vendors and events are lower than many other communities. We did review this. Now, the one thing is that the zoning permit may need to be pulled in these location permits that have not been previously, that has not been part of our ordinance. That is the only change, but the, the fees themselves, when you look at our, some, many of our surrounding jurisdictions, mobile food vendors are not prohibited from Auburn Hills, and many of the fees in Ferndale, Detroit, Royal Oak, and Berkeley are more expensive in those, in those jurisdictions, just to have a mobile food vendor. And then the event fees, when you look at what the city has between $150 and $500, you know, it's very competitive with what we have. Obviously, $500 for a major event, there's a lot of public safety review, so there's, it's a little understandable why that fee is a little higher. The, so this leads into just sharing, and this was shared as the town hall, as what is, what is a potential event organizer, what is a potential mobile food vendor going to pay? So at the very top above the red line is the annual license fees, and returning vendors pay $25. If you did not have a license in the previous year, it is $75. Compared to the other jurisdictions that are $200, you know, it is pretty competitive. Now, there are five different types that I wanted to identify here. So say you're doing an event in a park, and it's a minor event. You're not meeting any of those criteria of having a ton of food trucks, you're not having more than 200 people. Really, that event aligns with our park ordinance, our park regulations. You do not need a zoning permit, because we already have an ordinance in place. So you only have to go through a park permit, because it's already approved as a park. And, and a lot of these, these minor events really flow with what is meant to happen in a park, and that would be both formal and informal gatherings. And, and minor events would be a little bit more formalized, but it only needs a park permit, and that's $130, with $100 of that being a returnable deposit at the, at this current time. So if you're doing a minor event, but it's on private property, that's where it goes to the next line. That's where you would need a temporary use permit, and it would be $150. That would be citywide. Anything not in a park, that's where it falls under the zoning ordinance. Now, if you're doing the location permit, that, again, is $150. That, that is good for, for one calendar year, to be able to operate either a mobile food vendor or multiple mobile food vendors for that calendar year. Now, the major events, if it's in a park, because you're having a larger event, it requires additional public safety, it is a little larger than what is normally held in a park. It is really a special event, is, which is what it's been termed before. That's where it qualifies. Instead of needing a park permit, you would, you get the temporary use major permit. I do want to clarify as part of this, we've referred to that as special event. This ordinance, both ordinance just tonight, really modify that from a special event to temporary use major, just to help separate between what is a major and minor and keep some consistency within that language. Lastly, major events on private properties, the same criteria would apply. It would be $500 for that, for that fee. So just as a summary, this ordinance establishes and/or revises the rules and regulations for all mobile food vendors in the city must be licensed, and the regulations establish for the temporary use zoning permit for all four, and really, we're clarifying, we're establishing some of the languages and the criteria for that. Planning Commission recommended approval 6 to 0 of the text and map amendment with one condition of approval, and that was removing the requirements for insurance on temporary use minor events. Because we had, you know, having a sidewalk sale, we would not need a million-dollar insurance policy, and it just was something that Planning Commission identified we removed from the ordinance. So what has been presented to City Council back even at first reading, had this removed and updated from the ordinance, but I did want to share what their official decision was. The motion, as I've mentioned this evening, in front of City Council tonight, is based on the feedback from the mobile food vendor operators. The motion is up on the screen, I will read it, but the, if City Council were to consider this, I move to amend the mobile food vendor ordinance, Section 2.554(c)(3a), to allow mobile food vendors to operate between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and all holidays recognized by the city of Pontiac in the C0, C1, C3, C4, TC, CC, and MUD zoning districts. That is my presentation. Thank you, City Council. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation at this time. I'll open it up for council. Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. One question. Do we have any parklets in Pontiac?
I'm, there have been, there's no official parklet in the city, the, the way in my research. There have been a few site plans that have been, been approved years ago, you know, that, but there's no official parklets that has the requirements that we have here.
Is there any plan to install some, since we put it in the ordinance?
Well, I mean, I'm, we're obviously looking for adoption. I can say that the one thing that is, I think City Council may have had on an, an announcement under a presentation, is that Main Street Pontiac has received a grant, and they're looking to put one in at a 111th North Saginaw Street. So that's the first one that we're aware, that they're starting to, to get their, their ducks in a row if this ordinance were to be passed to move forward. There has been interest in this ordinance from others to create parklets in the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman James.
First of all, Mark, I'd like to say that I really appreciate the hard work that you have done with this ordinance, because with the engagement, I really appreciate the language changes and things that have gone into it that I believe have made it a lot more user-friendly ordinance for the city of Pontiac. First of all, my first question is, is this presentation going to be made available online?
We can absolutely do that. I can send that to Paula Bridges in the morning and, and post that on our website.
Yeah, because, you know, this, this has been a very complicated ordinance, and I think what you have done here simplifies a lot of it, and I, I would love to see this online. My second question is, could you also do some just basic, simple flow charts for the process? You know, process charts to, to kind of, because it's still, you know, I'm still struggling with park events as opposed to public events that are not in parks.
Okay.
And the fact that these, in, these cross over from DPW, there are three, three departments that are actually involved in this process. DPW, planning, and Parks and Rec. And I think maybe you have it straight, but a, a resident coming into City Hall wanting to just, you know, get approval to do this or that, this is an extremely complicated process. So we need to have some kind of really simplified flow charts that let people know, what's the process? If I want to go, if I want to rent or a pavilion in one of the parks for, you know, just a family reunion or whatever, wha, what do I do?
Yep.
Because, you know, when you get into, okay, should I go to planning? Should I go to DPW? Do I need to contact Parks and Rec? And often, these departments don't communicate with each other in terms, especially when we have changes in the process. You have one department telling people one thing and another, some, something else. So we really need to coordinate between these three departments, create some simple flow charts for our residents, so they understand who they need to go to, to get the appropriate, you know, approvals that they need.
I appreciate your comments, and I would say that upon adoption of this, we are ready to update our application process.
Yeah.
But all, that also includes flow chart, and I really have appreciated working with our parks staff, you know, and we're going to make sure that that's clearly identified. The mobile food vendors would go straight to planning, because that's where that's, and some of the signage in City Hall says that. Really, the, the parks permit, we want that conversation to start with our parks team, and we will make sure that that's communicated on our, the workflow within our documentation and our application process, and then all the other zoning permits for, would really want to start out at the planning office, and we'll make sure to incorporate that.
Okay.
And if I could add, really, this ordinance just reiterates 60 days is the notice needed for these special events. Not a mobile food vendor location permit, but if you're doing a temporary use major or minor, we need 60 days advanced notice. That is not being modified by this, but it's, it's really being strengthened by this. And we've already had some initial, we had a pre-applica, we had a, a application for a, an event already, and, you know, we, we had a process where the applicant is speaking with fire, police, public works, and, and we're really working through that event already, so.
Any other questions?
The other one is, how are we to handle the resolution that you're recommending?
Well, I'm actually planning to do that shortly when we get done with discussion.
Okay.
Anyone else want the floor? Councilman Goodman.
I just simply want to say thank you for working with the business owners and trying to, you know, listen to their concerns and change the ordinance accordingly, because I know a lot of them had a lot of concerns and, you know, you know, taking the time to walk this through, to do the town halls, to have these discussions. I appreciate you going through the effort as you have, so thank you.
I thank you, Councilman Goodman. Again, just thank you guys for working on this ordinance. I think that the Wawa West in the 6th district is no longer, so it's good to have regulations and, and processes in place. At this time, if we don't have any more discussion, I move to amend the mobile food zoning ordinance, Section 2.554(c)(3a), to allow mobile food vendors to operate between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and all the city of Pontiac recognized holidays in the C0, C1, C3, C4, TC, CC, and MUD zoning districts. Could I get a second?
I'm sorry, second.
I'm sorry? Second, okay. So I moved, Councilman, Councilman Parker's second. Roll call, clerk.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. That motion passed, so this ordinance is amended. So originally, we already had a motion in the second for the adoption on February 20th. So at this time, Clerk Doyle, could I have roll call on adoption of the ordinance? So at this time, Clerk Doyle, could I have roll call on adoption of the ordinance?
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
Okay. Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted as amended. The next item of business is item three, adoption of an ordinance to amend the City of Pontiac's municipal ordinance to amend licensing requirements for mobile food trucks and to regulate special events to include Article, looks like 19A, Chapter 26, Sections 26-1030 through 26-103. This is a second reading. This was deferred from February 20th on City Council meeting. I need a motion in a second to adopt this ordinance.
So move.
I will now turn it over to Mayor Grimal for context.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is essentially a amendment to a different part of the ordinance that is needed in order to effectuate everything that our planning manager, Mark Andrick, has already spoken to. So there are really two different sections of ordinance that are being amended. One is the zoning ordinance, which Council just voted to amend. The other is the municipal ordinance. And I believe that these two, in conjunction, accomplish everything that our planning manager, Mark Andrick, has proposed and presented. But Manager Andrick, take it away.
I just wanted to briefly summarize the changes here. The meat of it was in the zoning ordinance. But what the changes before you in the municipal ordinance really are to align with those zoning changes. And some of the high-level thing, important things here is that previously, this was considered part of a business license for a mobile food vendor. And that is being changed as just a license, and that allows the different fee schedule. That's already in the approved fee schedule, but make sure that we're clarifying that correctly. And then we're also identifying the mobile food vendor location permit that you just, City Council just adopted. One other minor thing is really a 501(c)(3, this may have come from Councilwoman James in subcommittee, but the 501(c)(3) for a mobile food vendor would also be exempt from the fees of the license requirement. So if there's any questions on that, let me know. But this is very procedural, there's no big policy changes. This just aligns with the zoning ordinance amendment that was just adopted.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yarwick. Open it up for discussion. Council has any questions? Hearing none. Clerk Doyle, can you have roll call on adoption of the ordinance?
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays.
Thank you. The adoption of the ordinance is passed. Thank you for that, Clerk Doyle. At this time, the next department grants, Philanthropy Department. We have several resolutions coming out of that department. I'm sorry. I see four, five, and six. Resolution to schedule in public hearings for the city-proposed community development block grant funding plan on April 2nd and April 16th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. I need a motion in a second to approve the resolution.
I make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Thank you. I will now turn it over to Mayor Grimal for context.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This was on the agenda last week. And the original proposal was to hold these public hearings around community development block grant program, which we are bringing back in-house to the city effective July 1st for all future program years of the community development block grant process. The proposal originally was to hold these public hearings on April 3rd and April 17th. Last week, City Council expressed, again, and it makes a lot of sense, that rather than holding these on a different day when City Council members and I would have to attend, that it would make more sense to hold them on the same days as the City Council meetings on April 2nd and April 16th. And so what is before City Council this evening is a proposal to do exactly that and to start these public hearings an hour before the normal start time of the City Council meeting. In other words, to hold these on April 2nd and April 16th at 5:00 p.m. right here in City Council chambers.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. Any questions from Council?
Yes.
Yep. Councilwoman James.
Yes, I'd like to know, do we have to call our meeting early at 5:00 in order to have this public hearing?
Yes, that's a great question. Deputy Mayor, can you answer that for us?
Absolutely can. No, you do not.
So again, the council doesn't need to be present for?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Actually, council would need to be.
You have a floor.
Council would need to be present for the public hearing. So you would call?
Please, quiet in the chambers, please.
Two separate things. You would call the public hearing at 5:00. You would be present for that. Once the public hearing is over, then your regular meeting would start at 6:00 p.m.
I guess it's some, it's some miscommunication between departments, I see. So what has attorney said, Deputy Mayor?
So I will consult with Attorney Gurley. But we got, we got direction from HUD. So we have to hold this public hearing according to HUD. And council does not have to be present at the public hearing according to HUD. Now, it could be that what Clerk Doyle is saying is that because council is scheduling the public hearing, council has to be present because council is the one that is scheduling it. But council does not have to be present at the public hearing for HUD guidelines. So is that what I'm hearing you saying, Clerk Doyle? Yes, if council schedules the public hearing, you have to, in essence, be present for the public hearing. And then in addition to that, you will, HUD requires that there are minutes from the public hearing. You have to vote on the plan. So technically, you have to hear what the public has, in essence, said. It's my understanding that's why the meetings were changed to the day of your meeting, so where in essence you could be present.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. From the council's standpoint, can everyone be there early on, on that particular date? I know I can be there, so.
Well, I guess my question is, you know, this is a public hearing. We've had, we had a public hearing tonight. Why wasn't this put in a regular meeting? I guess, you know, is my question. Why wasn't this just added as a part of the meetings on the 2nd and the 16th? Because I thought we went over this last week, that it would have to be a part of an actual called meeting.
Mayor Grimal, you have a floor.
Yeah, thank you. What we discussed last week was that we would look into this and try to get some clarity around what the requirements are in terms of scheduling this. I know the deputy mayor has gone to ask the city attorney, Joanne Gurley, if she can speak to some of these questions, because she was the one who really looked into this. But the concern was, if we start this at 6 o'clock, that it would take a substantial amount of time away from the meeting. And the expectation, at least, is that it'll take more time to do these public hearings than it will the public hearing for the sale of property. So that was the concern and why it was proposed to start at 5:00 p.m.
Okay.
Any follow-up questions, Councilwoman James?
Well, if we need to, I would be able to start the meeting at 5:00.
All right, that's fine. So we shouldn't have any issues. So anyone else for discussion? So I read the resolution. Resolution requests City Council approval to hold two public hearings to introduce the updated citizen participation plan for the community development block grant funding. Whereas the city participation plan must align with the requirements listed in the 24 CFR Part 91.105, Citizen Participation Plan for Local Governments, and the HUD requirements contained in any applicable federal register notices allocating funds. And whereas the citizen participation plan would encourage citizen participation related to planning, implementation, and assessment of proposed and actual programs that will be funded with community development block grant federal dollars. And whereas the City of Pontiac would hold two public hearings, the first on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. in council chambers, the second hearing scheduled for Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, in council chambers at 5:00 p.m. to attain citizen participation and to respond to proposals and questions related to CDBG funds that's required by federal law. Now and therefore be it resolved, the City Council hereby approves holding two public hearings for the introduction of the updated citizen participation plan and to receive community feedback on proposed and actual programs funded through community development block grant federal program for the City Council. So that's what we vote on here tonight, to schedule those two public hearings. Do we have any other questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please give us roll call.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. Those public hearings have been scheduled. The next item is from the Planning Division. Resolution approving Mayor or Deputy Mayor to award the bid and execute the AIA Document B133-219, contract with Racer Mercer to design a youth community recreation center. I need a motion in a second to approve this resolution. This is for the youth community recreation center design.
So move.
Second.
All right, thank you. I will now turn it over to Mayor Grimal for context.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the result of a lot of effort on a lot of different people's parts. This really was a team effort. We put out an RFP to select an architectural firm. I want to thank our purchasing manager, Alicia Martin, for her and her team's hard work in doing this. And then we had a really robust process where we took all of the proposals from different architectural firms. We winnowed those down to a smaller group for interviews. And we had a really broad and diverse group involved in the interviewing process. That group included our purchasing manager, it included the deputy mayor and me, it included three council people, President McGinnis, President Protam Carrington, and Councilwoman Kathleen James, who is the chair of our Parks and Recreation and Public Works Committee. It also included the city engineer and another person from her office. And perhaps most importantly, it included our Parks and Recreation Director, Terrence Price, and our youth recreation manager, Tanisha Taylor. And we come forward to recommend the Racer Mercer team in conjunction with Hobbs &amp; Black, because they really were thought highly of everybody. So they were the clear consensus pick where everybody, or virtually everybody, had them in their top three selection. And we're excited about their proposal. We think that they will do this in an expeditious way. The design process will take a long time. It'll take a solid nine months, give or take, just to do the design and architectural work and prepare the construction drawings. And at that point, we will go out for bid for the construction work. We won't know the exact cost of construction, of course, until it goes out to bid and is bid on by construction firms. But we anticipate that this will cost 20 or more million dollars to really build the kind of state-of-the-art youth recreation center that our community and, most importantly, its young people deserve. And with that, I'll turn it over to our purchasing manager, Alicia Martin, to get into more of the details.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members, Protam. Thank you for having me here. I'm having, to join me today, Betsy. She is representing Hobbs &amp; Black. Hi, Betsy. If you don't mind, just come introduce yourself, and then I'll get into the specifics.
Hello, I am Betsy Hobbs, president of Hobbs &amp; Black Architects. Just want to say thank you as part of the larger Mercer Racer team. We really are so honored and humbled to be part of this really important project and excited to work with the team and the community through the process. So, you know, thank you so much.
Thank you, Betsy. So the Racer team, just to give perspective, it's not just Racer MRSS that's forming this team. There are a couple of other firms that will partner with them. So the partner is Hobbs &amp; Black Architects, which Betsy, excuse my voice, I have something going on, cold wise, but Hobbs &amp; Black is partnering with Racer. They're providing project direction, architectural assistance from that regard. We have IMEG, excuse me, which will be providing additional project management, senior professional services, consulting services. We have Scales &amp; Associates, which is an engineering architect. We have Spalding De Decker, which is another firm that came before our evaluation committee a couple of times with the firms that we're presenting. And then we also have Somat Engineering, Site, Baker Group, and WTI. All of these firms are firms that are located within the state of Michigan. So they'll definitely be helping to ensure that this project is successfully designed for the City of Pontiac.
And these are teams that we've worked with over the years.
I'm sorry, if you don't speak, you have to go to the podium, please.
Apologize, I should have mentioned it, sorry.
And it comes back to the floor? Or is it passing on to anyone else?
Okay. I just wanted to say the extended team are teams we've all worked with for several years on many projects together. So it should be a very cohesive process. Thank you.
Ms. Martin, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a presentation for, because we just had to just look at. So do you have a presentation that we can look at?
So, so this proposal, I do not have a presentation tonight. This proposal was what was given to the evaluation committee when they were considering the firms. And I do apologize, I can prepare something if need be to share with the community. But I'll do my best tonight to just go through why we're selecting this particular firm. So we did look at approach and methodology. Community engagement was definitely an important component of what we were interested in, how the firm would interact with the community in terms of collecting, what their wants were, what they wanted to see within a community center. We were looking at sustainability, how they would implement electrical within the facility that's sustainable. Also, the landscaping endeavors with making that sustainable. So there was just so much encompassed in this project. But again, we did want to make sure that whoever we hired would have the ability to definitely engage with our community because we know that that's important to our council, to make sure that they are inclusive, that they're a part of this design process. It's not just the city coming up with all the answers and solutions. They do want to get feedback from the community. And that's exactly what will be happening with this endeavor. And I don't know if the mayor wants to add additional content to that. How would I give it back to you? I'm sorry.
Mayor Grimal.
Well, that is a really important point of emphasis. One of the key questions we asked all of the architectural firms was how they plan to interface with the community and really have detailed listening sessions, town halls with the community to get that community feedback from people of all ages, including our young people, who will be most directly using the facility, about what the community wants to see incorporated into the facility. We included the basics in the RFP in terms of gymnasiums and a pool and some of the other important amenities. But we really want to hear from the community about some of the details around that. As we've talked about at other City Council meetings, the city acquired the site where the old McCarroll School is, at the corner of Montcom and Glenwood. This is a really centrally located parcel that is centrally located east to west and north to south in the city. It's pretty much dead center on a map of the city. So we're excited about the centrality of that location. But also, it's right across Glenwood from Oakland Park. It's right around the corner from Aaron Perry Park. So not only will we be able to construct a state-of-the-art indoor youth recreation center out of this location, but it's also very close to some really terrific outdoor recreation places for our community as well. But again, I really want to emphasize that one of the key But again, I really want to emphasize that one of the key focuses of the conversation when we brought these firms in for an interview was about community engagement and getting that input, getting that feedback from the community about what Pontiac residents want to see incorporated into this facility.
All right, thank you, uh, mayor Grammer. Councilwoman James.
Yes, I want to, um, echo the comments of, uh, mayor, uh, and others. Uh, we definitely were looking at, and I was part of the team, as he said, uh, we were definitely looking at, uh, three things in particular, price, uh, timing, uh, because we don't want to, uh, be building this for the next 10 years. So we want, we wanted a, a smooth and quick timing for this turnaround time, and we were looking at the excellence of design and public engagement. Uh, something else that the mayor mentioned is that we are aware that the site we've chosen, uh, is sandwiched between two of our major parks in the city, Oakland Park, where we have a brand-new skate park, and the Aaron Perry Park. So the vision is to create a community center that somehow reaches out and embraces those green spaces and make, you know, and just really create a huge campus there, uh, that all of our citizens would be able to enjoy. So there were a lot of things that we took into consideration, uh, in, in choosing this company and, and looking at, you know, the plan that we wanted to, to do going forward, so.
Thank you, councilwoman James. Uh, councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. My comment was, uh, and I certainly appreciate everything that's been said, but, uh, I was just handed this this evening. It was still hot when I got it. I haven't had opportunity to look through it. I was not a part of the selection committee. We got three of our other colleagues missing for this event, so I would ask that we would delay this until they come and are present and I can get, or we can get an opportunity to review this bracket further.
Actually, uh, we was just consider, about to consider that. So, uh, but I'm, I thankful that we definitely can do that. Uh, first and foremost, can I get, um, councilman Goodman and councilman, um, James to remove their motion to approve this? I'm sorry. Clerk Doyle.
All you would need is a motion to postpone for however long you want to postpone.
All right, thank you. Councilman Goodman.
I have a motion to postpone this for one week.
It's been moved by, uh, councilman Goodman, supported by councilman Parker, that we postpone this item, um, resolution approving a mayor or deputy mayor to admit, to award and the bid and execute the AIA document B 133, 2019 contract with Racer Mercer to design a youth community recreation center. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, I'm sorry?
I'm so sorry. May I ask a question?
Uh, yes.
For council. Um, would you like for me to prepare a presentation?
Well, actually, I was going to send an email to you after this meeting.
Okay.
Because basically, some of the things that you, that I've seen.
Yes.
Some of this will be great for the community to see what company that we bringing in here to build this 20 million dollar, uh, recreational center.
Yes, sir. I'll prepare that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, clerk Doyle, roll call, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Three a's, one nay. Well, I don't, I think ordinances require four votes, but I believe, city attorney's not in here. Um, resolutions, I believe, can pass with.
The majority?
With the majority. Ordinances cannot. Ordinances would require.
Can we get some clarity from our city attorney?
Yeah, if she could clarify on that. Mr. Protem, it, it was actually just a motion. It wasn't even a resolution, it was just a motion.
It's a motion, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so you saying all we need is majority to, to pass?
I believe.
I'm just trying to get clarity because, um, this first time this happened since I've been here for two years, so.
I believe that's, that's the, the case.
Yeah, just, uh, I'm, I'm going to take a, a 20, uh, two-minute recess.
Okay.
I make a motion to take a, a two-minute recess. Can I get support?
Yeah, we said yeah.
Okay. Well, actually, um, can I sus, can I currently suspend a motion until we able to talk to attorney? No, so I ain't think.
You've already, you've already voted on the, the motion to postpone for one week.
Okay. So, as we stand, the motion failed based on, uh, unless the clerk has some more information or the attorney has some more information concerning majority vote on a motion.
I don't, I don't think actually that the motion did fail. I think the motion was approved because.
Oh, majority?
Yes, the majority of the people that were present voted for the motion. So I don't think that the motion did fail.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to get a floor to.
Well, that, that is the crux of the question. I don't know for sure the answer, which is why we're waiting on the city attorney, but the question really is, is it a majority of those present and voting, or is it a majority of those serving? And, um, I don't know the answer, but, but we'll, we'll need to have the city attorney weigh in.
Right.
Okay. Mayor Grammer, is she, is she, is she close? Okay, because basically, we, we definitely, we definitely need our attorney when we have these meetings in, in, in the chambers. Actually, uh, Dr. Waterman, I already, I already talked to the clerk. Thank you guys for being patient. Uh, we had to consult with our legal staff. So our Robert Rules of Orders takes precedence since this is only, uh, a motion and not a resolution. So actually, the resolution does pass. I mean, the motion does, the motion does pass 3-1, uh, so it's postponed for a week until next meeting. Uh, thank you. The next item is a resolution to approve a National Network for Safe Communities contract in response to the city group's violence intervention, RFP solicitation number 24-699-0001. I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
So moved.
I will now turn it over to mayor Grammer for context.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this, I'm sure, will, uh, be familiar to city council because this did come before, uh, city council some months ago, uh, after a recommendation from the Anti-Violence Commission, uh, which recommended, uh, wisely that the city do more to try to prevent violence from happening in the first place. Uh, the sheriff's office does a great job of responding to crime after the fact, but we really need to do more in order to try to prevent that crime, especially violent crime, from happening in the first place. And there is a national organization, the National Network for Safe Communities, that's based in, uh, New York City, that runs and operates ceasefire programs across the country, including, uh, in places like Detroit and Jackson, Michigan, but also in places like Chicago. And it really is all about trying to have early interventions with those most at risk of committing violence in the community and try to persuade them to go down a more constructive path, uh, instead of a path of violence. And so this came before, uh, city council some months ago, uh, but at the time, we believed that we did not need to go through some sort of RFP or other competitive process to select the entity. We believe that it was, uh, valid under a sole source contract provision. Uh, since that time, our city attorney advised us that we really do need to go through an RFP process. We have done so, not surprisingly, since there aren't many organizations that do this kind of work. The National Network for Safe Communities, uh, commonly known as ceasefire, is the only entity that put in a proposal, and we are now recommending that we, uh, approve this contract, again, with the National Network for Safe Communities, in the stated amount of just under $300,000. Our proposal is to use American Rescue Plan Act dollars for this. Uh, we allocated $500,000, uh, and by we, I mean both city council and the administration, jointly allocated $500,000 for public safety initiatives in the community, and we recommend that this be approved and that we utilize those dollars to fund this.
Uh, thank you, um, mayor Grammer. Uh, Ms. Martin, do you have anything to, to offer?
The mayor covered.
All right, thank you. At this time, council is open for discussion. Uh, mayor Grammer, also concerning this particular, uh, resolution, how many, um, Pontiac people are planned, you guys plan to, to hire when it comes to implementing, uh, ceasefire in the city of Pontiac?
Yes, we will be hiring two people, uh, to run the program. That's in addition to this cost. So in addition to this just under $300,000 contract amount with the National Network for Safe Communities, we will also be hiring two individuals to, uh, actually run the program year in and year out. Uh, those individuals have yet to be hired because the first step is the contract with the National Network for Safe Communities, and then we will be interviewing to fill those two positions. Those two positions are posted online on the city's website, so we encourage people who are interested in serving in that capacity to apply online. Uh, those, uh, positions are really important to be filled, uh, by people who know Pontiac well, preferably by Pontiac residents. Uh, alternatively, it needs to be somebody who is very, very active, uh, in Pontiac and really understands the community. But again, our preference, all else being equal, would be to fill those positions with Pontiac residents.
Uh, thank you, mayor Grammer. Council, anybody else want the floor? Councilman Parker.
I just have one question, really. As we talk about the ceasefire contract and initiative that we're starting, and I believe the question was that this would be funded with ARPA monies, so how do we anticipate being able to continue this after the ARPA money is gone?
Yeah, so the most expensive years of the contract with the National Network for Safe Communities are really the first two years because they put an enormous amount of effort into first doing a study of what's driving violence in any given community. They do a lot of work actually setting up and establishing the program and then training the two local people who are operating the program. There are continuing annual costs, but those are much less expensive, both in terms of the, uh, well, in terms of the annual contract with the National Network for Safe Communities. So in terms of that price tag, that is much less in years three, four, five, and so forth. It's more of a monitoring, uh, mission or monitoring role for the National Network for Safe Communities. The major annual cost moving forward will be the cost of employing those two individuals, and we're confident that we can afford. and we're confident that we can afford that out of the city's general fund.
Any follow-up question, Councilman Parker?
No, I'm good.
Council, any other questions? Haringan roll call.
James?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Fourier, it's no names.
Next on the agenda is public comment, and I know half this room is here for public comment. So please, thank you for being patient, and you guys are still here. Kudos to you guys. Councilman Goodman?
First on public comment is Floretta Thirkhelt. Floretta Thirkhelt? All right. Next is Mr. Robert Bass.
Good evening once again. My name is Robert Bass and president of Citizen District Council in District One. And I wanted to talk about two different items, but don't look like I want to get there. Bottom line is, you talked about the Citizen Participation Plan. I'm getting mixed information about that Citizen District Plan. Now, I'm being told that there is no Citizen District Plan, and there will not be a Citizen District Plan. But I've talked to someone else in the city that is compiling a plan to go into the master plan as a Citizen Participation Plan. Now, this is the Citizen District, the Citizen District Plan that was put in, that was redone in 96. So yes, outdated, but it's still active. Bottom line is, the paperwork that they said that I asked for, because if you're compiling a Citizen District Plan, then I need to see it to match it up with what we already have on file. Okay? I was told that they didn't have anything to go by, so they made it up off of various departments like Hood and Bloomfield, I mean Oakland County, and various other organizations. Now, that poses a problem for me because I've compiled a number of people to sit down and go over both of these plans to see before you have the public hearing. Because that particular document that they're drafting now as a Citizen Participation Plan is thicker, a lot thicker than what we have. We only have nine pages. But that thickness, we have to go through it word by word to see where we fit in. Have you eliminated the CDCs? Have you eliminated the community groups? What is compiled in that new document that y'all putting together to go into the master plan? And if it's not a Citizen Participation Plan, then all the nuances in the Citizen District Plan you're going to have to have in there because you can't receive these fundings without it being there. Because we play a major role in how this money is oversaw and as well as dispensed. And the council is our overseers. Y'all give us direction. So y'all have to be inclusive of all the meetings because y'all tell us when we're supposed to meet to oversee this project. And it's a number of meetings, several meetings that have to take place before you start dispensing this money. So it's problematic that we're, is it my time?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Thank you.
Next up is Dr. Georgia Waterman.
Good evening. I'm glad you decided to postpone by a simple vote of three to one the racer architectural firm to do the design for the youth center. And I'm glad you did that because I think there's some other discussion that needs to be had about that. Number one, in the packet, as I looked to see what was described about this firm, and the packet, you had, no name or address was given for this firm, number one. So that made me look a little further. I went to the website and saw the website. They're in Chicago, and which made it interesting to me. For a $3 million contract, we couldn't find anybody local or in Michigan. I thought that was what your pledge to be. We wanted to use local contractors. And the other thing was that I noticed that as I looked through the staffing, there didn't seem to be any diversity there. And certainly, communities like ours, a lot of communities are looking at and asking that question about bringing in diversity, particularly representing the kind of community we are, a very mixed community. So I hope you do ask that when you have the chance to address them again next week. I see as an answer to maybe that, because they're sensitive to that. They didn't say they were bringing all these other firms, but I think that was an afterthought, and I think we should know that it's not just name-calling because none of those other firms' names are in the packet that we were brought to vote on. But I did want to mention two things because this is, two events coming up this Saturday. Number one, a number of groups are having a wellness expo at Well Commissionary Baptist Church. Everybody's invited to attend. We are going to do a voter registration booth. This is important. I won't go into that, but we've got a group that's want to make sure that we get people, voters, voters registered to vote, who are eligible but not registered. This is going to be important elections coming up, and we need to get more people voting and registered. So we're going to have the booth there. And then at 12 to 2, that same afternoon, the Pontiac Public Library for Women's History Month is doing a panel and to inspire women and encourage women. They're invited, all women are invited to come right at the Pontiac Public Library. I'll be one of the speakers of women with a message, and everybody's welcome for lunch and tea sampling, et cetera. But the last thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm going to have a lot of time, but this is a question to council, to you, is that I came on March 5th, and I talked about the fact that the ARPA money seems to be messed up here. You know, the people were supposed to hear about who was getting these small business grants that the mayor had described, you know, how much this is going to be. And so nothing had been heard, you know, for two months. So the next day, a bunch of us got a notice about, oh, well, we're sorry we hadn't talked to you, but watch this video tonight. And I said, well, wait a minute. They were supposed to be getting grants and things like that, and people told me. So today, I went down there again, and this afternoon, somebody said to me, "Did you see what everybody's supposed to go and Tamika Ramsey is supposed to be assessing them?" I said, "Well, when did this get bid out? Did you know that, council, that Tamika Ramsey is now the total person who's supposed to be doing the assessment for this program? I just thought I'd let you know because I hadn't heard that that had been bid out or had been awarded."
Thank you, Dr. Waterman.
Next on the speaker's list is Norbert Burrows. Next on the speaker's list is Sonia Williams.
We got a list, so we need to go in order, so we won't miss anybody.
But I'm speaking her behalf, yeah, for everybody. And I came late. They signed before me. But I'm Jackie Burnett, and I do live at 1140 Amos. And I'm here with my team from Lancaster's because we do have a lot of things that are happening over there that we need to address. A lot of the things that are happening that maybe you guys don't know, a few of you do know. And the women that are here and gentlemen that are here tonight, they don't even come to meetings, but it is so imperative that we're here because what we have going on is health issues that needs to be addressed. And everyone has a separate issue, but it is very bad for us all over there. And we just wanted to come today to start coming to so you guys can know about it. You guys can take what we have going over there very serious because it's serious to us. It's not just an apartment complex for us. It's home. This is all we have. We have nothing else. And we don't have the proper people in place in our community that's supposed to help us be okay because they're not with us. They're mostly against us, so we have no one to go to to talk about our concerns, our health issues, the mold, the no money, all of that. So everyone that is here today is here to talk about an issue that maybe can help. If you can help us or maybe give us the right direction to where to go because we don't have anyone to go to for direction. So we're here on our own to get some help. So everyone that wants to talk, maybe you can use your three minutes. Let's talk about it. If you guys want to hear about it, whatever you don't know, but it's a whole lot. And a lot of people are not here because of fear. Because if you go, oh, yep, you get a letter tomorrow. You coming? Oh, no, I'm coming over. They don't know what to do. They will be here, but they say, "You go, and you tell us how it went." They're not comfortable with coming because right now it's like a cloud over Lancaster's as far as our shelter, our health, our finances, our money that we pay for rent. Where is it? We owing this and didn't owe it before. Like, where is all this coming from? So it's like an umbrella of things that we don't understand, and then we don't have anyone to help us understand this. The board was here. They're gone, I think. Okay, why are they not here? We need y'all to be here to help us vouch for why we're here, but guess why? We can't go to them for nothing. That's why they're not here. They came to see who was here and why I'm here, to speak for us all, but I just need help. So we are here by ourselves, and we're solo on this project, so we need some help. So if you guys can help us with this, tell us direction to go. We want to stay where we live. We don't want to lose our property because of mismanagement, and that is what's happening, and it's on the way. So I did a post, and I said to them, "I don't ask for much, but if I'm asking you to come to this meeting, come for me." But I'm doing the work, but I need their hands in it as well because I'm only one. And I have a lot of things that I want to say and do because I love it there. We love it there. We've been there forever. We, you know, we just don't want them to take it away from us or afford to be taken away from us. You get what I mean? So we're just really here to keep our shelter, keep our ground, and keep our comfort, and we just need your help.
Now, that concludes your time, but what is your name?
I am Jackie Burnett.
Jackie Burnett, okay. Make sure she...
I'm on there, second page.
All right. Thank you.
So just to ask before I go through all the other names, so... Well, the question I want, because you said that you're speaking on behalf of the people at Lancaster. So everyone who is from Lancaster, do you still want your time or not? Okay, just making sure. So to keep following the order, that's on the page, Yvette Edmondson.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Edmondson, and I live at 569 Lancaster. I've been in the community since 2006. We have a lot of mismanagement going on at this time. And like Jackie said, we just don't know where to go. You know, a lot of us are seniors, and this, we plan on this being our final home. We don't want to have to pick up and move because of certain things that are going on in the community. One of the issues that I've heard is that Lancaster was trying to go bankrupt so that Amazon could purchase the property, refurbish it, and rent it out to their employees. And it appears as such this is happening. Every time you put in a work order, you need some work done in your apartment, you get the answer, "We don't have any money." Well, where did all the money go? You know, this is a new property management company that has taken over. They've been there probably a little bit over three, under three years. And so we need some help. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next on the speaker's list is, I want to say Gloria Price.
Hello. My name is Gloria Price, and I do live in Lancaster. My address is 579 Lancaster. I've been out there almost like about 60, going on 50, 60 years. I've seen everything. I've seen it all. I've worked out there. I've cultivated the grounds and the lawns. But now, I'm disabled, and Pastor Parker is my district manager. And I did have a conversation with him last year, and I was told that he would be checking into some stuff, and they had been checking in some stuff, to give him time, and he would get back with me, but it's March, and I haven't heard from you. It's like you just forgot about us or put me on the back door.
No, ma'am, I didn't forget.
You represent the whole Lancaster, actually. So we are pleading for your help, somebody's help. Because there is no way a disabled social security person's rent can go from $250 up to $926 in less than six months. There's no way. You got to take, I have, I don't speak about myself. My social security is going towards all rent. They took it. I just got another one, saying that I owed them $181. I don't never be late. I don't owe these people any money. So this time, when it goes up, it's going to be over $900, $10,000. For what? So I went back, I worked for the school district for over 23 years. I had to go back to work part-time just to pay my other bills. We have other issues because they've taken all of my social security for this rent, and where is it going? I didn't work all this time to get it. I wish I was able to work, but I can't right now because I'm, as of now, I'm on a heart transplant list, and I can't deal with that stress that they sending me. Every time I come home and I see a letter in my box from Lancaster, I'm like, what now? What's going up now? So we need your help. We're not down here just making noise. We're down here trying to get our, keep a hold on to our homes, not just our apartment. This is our home. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excellent speaker's list is Damon Ferguson.
Good evening, citizens of Pontiac. Good evening, citizens of Pontiac. Thank y'all. I ain't come to grind no stone with nobody. I just came to bring some information. Join the gentleman of Gibraltar, number 19, for a charity fundraiser. We're having a fish fry. April 12, 2024, 12 noon until 8:00 PM. Location will be 345 Bagley Street, church there. We are selling catfish and whiting dinners with spaghetti, coleslaw, dessert, and a drink. Donations are $13. For more information, we need you to contact Brother Ruben Bell, area code 248-760-1780, or Brother Roger Arnold, 248-820-2135. Plus, I have a few tickets on me if you want to buy some. Thank y'all. God bless. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, Ms. Andrea Mans.
Good evening. I just have a couple of random things I wanted to talk about. I wanted to first revisit the two minutes and the three minutes for the public speaking and for the agenda address. We come here every week. Some of us come every week, and we get two to three minutes to talk on certain subjects that we should be able to, you know, at least speak three to five minutes on. And we listen to you all, go back and forth, talking, asking each other questions. You get two or three times to speak each sometimes, or however many times you want to speak. And I thought the city council meetings was to listen and to help out the constituents. So just when people are getting into the gist of what they want to talk about, the time is up. And then they're reminded, "Oh, your time is up. Your time is up," you know, but you all talk as long as you want, and you have no interruptions. So that was one of the things I wanted to bring up. And the second thing is, we have a lot of abandoned trucks, buildings, and whatnot. And it's not safe, especially the summertime is coming. People have been squatting in these places in the wintertime, and it's not safe for the children. Kids are coming up missing every day. I have grandchildren. My children are grown, but I have grandchildren, and I don't want them to come up missing. And then you have to go around searching all of these abandoned and vacant buildings and buses and whatnot. So I think it might be helpful if they started looking into some of those vacant and abandoned buses and buildings, you know, before something actually happens to these kids around here. And someone asked me about... And someone asked me about, I don't, I don't live in Caris Place, but I heard there's a lot of incidents that's happening over there. And some of the residents are concerned. They haven't been able to come up here and speak at the city council. But I think that's something that they want addressed to see why so much crime is happening over there and what you all can do to start preventing it. And I wonder how come we can't have heavy pickup every week? We get two items every other week. Why we can't have it every week? And that's it.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mans.
Uh, next on the speaker's list is Ms. Billy Swizer.
You can move her to the end, but I'm just gonna say this openly. You guys sign up on the list. Usually the people that want to go to the end actually go to the back of the second sheet. But I understand it. I understand. So I'm gonna have some exemptions tonight. I just don't want to make the law of the land because then next week, some people will be saying that I gave everybody privilege tonight and I didn't give it to them next week. So I just want to, I just want you to understand what you're asking me to do, okay? So you can put her last.
Uh, next up, Fred Watkins. Uh, next up would be Chuck Johnson.
He's not here.
Rosalyn Northcross.
Can I go to the end too?
Let's see. Just like I told you.
So to make this easier, so is anyone else who signed up for public comment?
Matter of fact, let's do this. Anybody from Lancaster, please line up on the back wall, please. Please give us your name since you're going out of order.
Is it already on? Hi, my name is Teresa Milton. I stay at, oh, good evening. First of all, my name is Teresa Milton. I stay at 595 Lancaster Lane. I've been there, be ten years in May. I sat on the board. So I know all the things that's been going on. I got three things I want to talk about real quick. One is, one of the problems we do have in Lancaster is those doors that they put on, they're no good. You can get in my, in my apartment with your I.D. And I've been complaining to them about this door. They keep saying, "If they fix it, I'm gonna catch my, my clothes gonna catch on it, blah, blah, blah." So I have to lock the top lock. If I don't lock the top lock, then somebody can come in my house. Second of all, I got two daughters that stay out there. One is pregnant and she's living with mold. She's been living with mold for quite some time. She's high risk of pregnancy. And I got a grandson that's there that's three. They always sick. She can't hardly breathe. She talked, I've talked to HUD already this morning. They came out in October. Here it is, March. And they still haven't came and fixed the problem. They keep saying they don't have the money. They're gonna come in here and patch the mold up where it started with her furnace. And her furnace been leaking. She stays in, she don't have a basement. So it's coming through the, from the furnace to the kitchen and it keep, it keep, the water keep leaking up, making her floor lift up or whatever. Second of all, my apartment, I have been raising, been doing foster care since 2008. And I got the last two children, 2010, 11. And I adopted those two children and they had mental problems. So I had, when I first moved out, I had information, if anything happened to my apartment, that they'll fix it because they had the paperwork. Because they'd do something, they might damage the property or whatever. One, my daughter just had a temper temperature and she put a hole in my door. So I called them and told them to come fix it, blah, blah. Dick Bill calls me a few weeks ago and said he coming at eight-thirty in the morning. They never showed up. So I seen the guy. The guy told me, "I'm coming to your apartment." They, people, the new people in the office, they ain't coming to fix the door because I gotta pay for it. Since when you gotta pay for something before it get done? I said, "Y'all got my paperwork. If anything happen, I've been here ten years, never had this problem." They did something in the apartment, y'all fix it. It wasn't too much, but they still fixed it. And they just angry because I spoke up for my children. Because you can't shut me up because I'm gonna talk and I'm gonna speak what I got to say. And that's just that.
Uh, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Sonia Williams. My address is 571 Lancaster. I've been a resident for forty-nine years. I seen it all. About two weeks ago, we had a flood in my row. We lost computers, laptops. They didn't have money to put us in a hotel. Everything we asked for, the manager says, "No money." My neighbor was out of her unit for six months with a newborn baby because of mold. So now we right back to square one. What they try to do is patch up everything. And I also was on the board, so I know what they're about. And hopefully I'll be back on the board. Because the board that we have now, they're not for us. We have people that's passed away and their loved ones still don't have their deposit back, two, three years. We had one man pass away behind the office. He lived behind the office. He's been passed July, May, three years. One bedroom, they haven't touched it. You can see his closet doors, everything. We have thirty-three empty units. We losing money. We're losing money. So hopefully y'all can get us on track or direct us somewhere else. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Nope. Uh, I'm not gonna let you speak again.
Oh, I just was initiating. Okay, that's fine.
That's fine, okay.
I'm not on that list because I was late. But I'm from Lancaster.
So, so you're asking me to give some grace? Actually, you should be on the list. But since I know you don't come down here a lot, I'm gonna, I'm gonna extend some grace to you, okay?
Okay. Okay, my name is Patricia Henderson. I've been in Lancaster for thirty-three years. I've seen, I've seen a lot. We've switched hands several times. We went to the back the other day and there's a gigantic hole in the back, which means it's about to be summertime. Them kids can fall in. And then the lady house that is in front of, she can't maneuver. She can't get her packages. She can't use that door. It's taped off. Her step is not up to her door. And it's just too much. She had to move her mailbox. So it's a lot going on and I didn't know that they could just tell you your rent going up and all that. I didn't know they can do that. But that's my issue. You know, they, they don't come to my unit when I, when I call. I don't know why, but they never do. And when they do come, it's still not fixed. It fall right off. So that's why my issue is, is I don't even call no more. I'm not calling you. What's for? Because you're not gonna fix it? So my thing is I'm gonna start fixing my own stuff and asking, can I take my own? If I fix it, my rent is gonna be what's gonna fix it. And then the escrow, I know, do we have that back yet? That's what I need to know. Oh, yeah, I had car, my gas twice. I lost my lungs during that time. Living in carbon dioxide because of a gas leak, twice. But that's all I got to say. I don't got, we gonna make these changes. Y'all gotta help.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Uh, next on the speaker's list is Rosalyn Northcross.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, people from, ladies from Lancaster. I feel you. And I hope that this city council and the offices of the city are able to give you some assistance and some relief. I'm here, as I have been since January, to talk about M1. And basically, we know that M1 has a lot of influence in the city. But we can't understand in District One how a gas station was built and residents were not notified. And especially a gas station that sells leaded gas, which has been prohibited from most gas stations since 1976. And this gas station is selling leaded fuel. And this leaded fuel is being used in the cars that are on the test track at M1. And the exhaust fumes from those cars becomes airborne. And we're in the area where it would fly to, it would go to. We're concerned about that and we want the city to test to see if our fears are founded or unfounded. Also, we have struggled with trying to make sure that we make our requests to the right people, agencies, departments in the city. And I was struck when Councilwoman James was speaking tonight about a flow chart. That's exactly what citizens need, somewhere on the website. However, if you have a concern about this, this is how you do it. Because right now, there is no clear way to know who to talk to about what issues. And that would really help the residents get the information we need and get it in a timely fashion so that, so that these needs can get addressed. So I hope that you will give that some consideration so that, because we were told that the decision about M1 expansion will be made by the planning commission. And the residents won't be able to say anything until public comment, which is at the end of the session. That just seems unfair to us. So we would like some relief on that matter. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Next up, Ms. Darian Clark.
Once again, good afternoon. First, let me speak as a, let me speak on behalf of our office. Mayor, you are being transparent and thank you for that. But you did make a statement early that it's $20 million that's going into the community center. And with that $20 million, a lot of people want to know, wouldn't it be much easier to rebuild a new center opposed to you taking an old building and putting $20 million in there? It's just a question that was brought to our attention. But now, let me, you need to say something? Now, let me speak now as a resident. And I'm speaking to the M1, Ms. Northcross, and I'm also speaking to Lancaster as a resident. Let's put that note. Lancaster residents, you're setting yourself up to be evicted. Anywhere there is a contamination, an unsafe environment, the office is not leaving you, are, okay? Now, Mayor, this is for you as well. You opened up the door and why these people are here is because you opened up the door. You as well, Council, and the Council from one through seven opened up this door. You opened up a project for people who's paying rent to come to you. They did come to you. But what the problem is, you need to let the, you need to put into your contract and bring to the Council that anything that's co-op is not governed by the city. Now, with all that being said, you having these people here out of frustration with no direction to go in. Please, Mayor, I ask this to you. May we have a good communication relationship or not? These people, City Hall can't do anything for these people but get them evicted. Now, I'm talking for M1, okay? M1, you come down here, Mr. Northcross, your husband? No. There's nothing really can be done with the mayor when a contract is already done. And remember, I'm speaking as a resident, a lone life resident. And understand this as well. People from Lansing, New York, Washington, Tennessee, all over is listening to this, this meeting. And every meeting before this, it has looked upon the Council and your actions on how you conduct a meeting. It has looked at your intentions. Also, it's looking that you only have four people on a forum that's bringing to question, is this meeting a legit meeting because you're missing the fifth person? But that's not my call. Hold up. I'm not, again, I'm talking as a resident. Now, the facts is to say, hey, you can do whatever you want to do. But once again, the people are Pontiac. And no disrespecting anybody, but you're showing such lack of disrespect for the people who come to this podium and begging you for time, begging you for help, and begging you to solve a problem that you opened up the door to say that you can solve. You have not solved their problem. You only every week get more and more complaints. Do something about it.
That concludes your time.
Well, thank you, Ms. Clark.
Uh, next up is Ms. Gloria Miller.
I'm gonna go at it a little different. Because a lot of you guys I know grew up in the city. It breaks my heart to hear this stuff. And I live around the corner from you in the hills. I didn't know a lot of this that was going on until the last two or three months ago. With that being said, anyone who remember me and how I do things, I protest. People, you the power. You the power. She is correct. You are a co-op. But there's, in my book, in my world, I'm a fighter. I'm a fighter. Ain't never too late for me, as long as I got breath. Don't you guys ever give up over there. Now, you want somebody to fight? I'll show you how to fight. Get you some sign, put them on the street. We need the press. We need to bring the press here. And better yet, bring the governor here. It's election time. It's election time, folks. I'm a rebel. I fight for my people. This is how I do it. You hurt, I hurt. I can't go home asleep tonight listening to what you got. What are we living in, 1920s? What the hell is going on in this city? This is ridiculous. I know most of you. My heart, I'm so sad. You know what? I've been home. I lost a couple people. And I was gonna get a fight up, but I can't. It's in me. Because when I see wrong, I call it for what it is. If they were gonna help you, they would help you right now. I'm just calling it a fact. I've been up in those seats before. I was there. But I walked. Because when you hurt, I hurt. And no, I'm not running for anything, but running for you. I'm gonna always be here to fight for anybody that need me in the city. I don't need to be in that seat to do what I need to do. Actually, I need to be on this side because I can talk more and I can do what I want to do. And I'm gonna tell you something. You guys get together. You need to go to the circuit court and you fight. You gotta stay together, though. You gotta stay together. This is one of the times that we gotta stand together. And as I said before, call the governor, call Biden, whatever it take to get here. Because this is unacceptable, living the way you're living here. Call, call the press. That's right. You know what? I got something in my garage from years ago. I still got signs. That's what I do. Because this is unacceptable. I also wanted to say to the Council, if you love your people, I always say this. Actually, speak louder than words. If you guys want to do the people, do the right thing for them, put them at the beginning of the agenda. I know, Mr. Carrington, you not the president. And I believe you. I thank you for what you did tonight. You did something the other council president never done. And speak to the people with respect and give them, because a lot of people don't know the procedure down here. They don't come down here. So they don't. These are our people. You respect them. You allow them to talk. They need to be put at the front of the agenda. Some of them went home with all these issues in their apartment. Please consider, please consider putting them at the beginning of the agenda. You call us when you want us to vote. You call us when you want us to vote.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
And the last one for public comment would be Carlton Jones. Oh, I apologize. Carlton, go. Billy, you asked to be at the end. You know, I'm putting you at the end. I almost forgot about you, but you were after Carlton.
So you know that happens when you jump locked. Yeah, let me say this, too. One of the things that we're learning, and I know I'm hearing the mayor talk more and more about community engagement, community engagement, that's more than just talk. Outside people cannot come in here and tell us about community engagement. We got community engagers here. If you truly want community engagement, you need to have some of us local people a part of everything that goes on and not coming from the outside trying to tell us about community engagement. We do not need nobody to supervise us and tell us about community engagement. I'm a community engager. I do community engagement work. And I feel for these sisters out here who come out here from Lancaster, because they are part of Pontiac. And we should not be given a runaround. I'm not saying nobody doing that, but I'm concerned about it. And I believe what Gloria is saying, any of us—you don't have to be an elected official, but we got to come and stay together, the people in Pontiac. And also, what Mr. Bass was talking about, this citizen participation plan. Don't take it like that he's the only one that tapped into that. A lot of us understand that we don't want the administration trying to write a citizen participation. We can write. We can write a citizen participation plan. If you didn't have it, don't think you're going to take the liberty to say we're going to give them a citizen participation plan. If you're going to do it, let's do it together. We'll write it together. Don't come and put a— And Council, I really appreciate the fact that you said tonight about that issue, this big—it's almost a $3 million issue. You just getting information? We didn't see anything in the package about it. We saw some information that had a lot of questions. And I think it's the right thing. Let's wait to make sure we understand before we engage. And I'm going to tell you, I know enough about architect engineering that we do not want to sign an AIA document. An AIA document protects architects and engineers. I'm telling you what I know. If you sign an AIA document, you doing nothing but signing their protection. We can get our own—whoever we hire, we need to have our own contractual agreement with them, not an AIA document. And for those people who don't know, the architects and engineers design those documents. And they will put them on the table all the time for you to sign them, but all the language in there protects them. And I'm going to tell you, if you start hiring them based upon a price that we have not facilitated, that price is going to lock them in for fees. And then, at the end of the day, where most of your cost overrun is from architect engineering changes. That's where change orders come. So now, you're going to put them in place, and then come later and put a CM. CMs can actually do a cost estimate. They can give you a parameter of cost, and then you bring your architect and engineer in to work collectively with your CM. That's the way it should happen. Now, I want to say one other thing, too, and that's right here, is I'm seeing a pattern of people coming to our city trying to take advantage of our citizens, and we not going to have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Ms. Billy Swazer.
What I wanted to talk to you is that the City of Pontiac retired employees, retired employees, are having an election for trustee—retiree trustee specifically. I hold that position now. There's four of us running for the position.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's on.
Okay. I'm running for that position. It has—you're valid has to be in by this Friday at 4:45 PM at 2201 Auburn Road at the office location. I'm asking for your support for those retirees that have a ballot. If you don't have a ballot, contact the retirement office at 248-456-0523 and get your ballot and vote. And I want to tell the people from Lancaster, this did come up when they were changing some ordinances, but not to this extent. So I wish you all good luck. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Councilman Goodman. At this time, the city council communications are listed on the agenda, so I won't read Mayor, do you want to highlight any of your communications?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of time, I just want to highlight two of them that are somewhat time-sensitive. Number one, I want to again mention and remind folks that we do have our second annual Spring Bash and Egg Hunt this Saturday from noon to 2 PM at United Wholesale Mortgage. This is being sponsored by the Pontiac Youth Recreation Division here. I want to thank our youth recreation manager, Tanisha Taylor, for putting that together. But this is a great, fun, family-friendly event. Obviously, it includes an egg hunt, but there'll also be a DJ there. There'll be some food on offer. And so come on out this Saturday, March 23rd, from noon to 2 PM at United Wholesale Mortgage. Secondly, I want to again remind folks that yard waste pickup will start up again on April 1st of this year. So I know we've had a lot of unseasonably warm weather recently. I want folks to know that starting April 1st, whenever your regular trash pickup day is, they will also start picking up yard waste, and that'll start the week of April 1st.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. At this time, your closing comments.
Yeah, so I want to try to answer a few questions that came up and address some of the concerns that were raised as well. First of all, I understand that Mr. Bass's question was about the Citizens Participation Plan for CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant Dollars. And as we mentioned, we will be having a public hearing on that issue on April 2nd as well as April 16th. That will allow folks to weigh in about not just community development block grant dollar expenditures, but also about the Citizens Participation Plan in particular. So we will be rolling out that Citizens Participation Plan. We look forward to public comments about that and any suggestions that residents may have about how to better engage residents here in the city. There was also a question about the selection of our architectural firm. There was a question posed about why it isn't a local firm. Actually, there are two architectural firms involved. Racer is one of them, and that is based in Chicago. But the other firm is Hobbs &amp; Black. And you had a representative here from Hobbs &amp; Black. Hobbs &amp; Black is a Michigan firm. There aren't a lot of architectural firms based in the City of Pontiac. There was one that put in a proposal as part of this. We did interview them. We have a high regard for that firm. But we did want to make sure that we were assessing all firms based on what we and other interviewers believed was the best possible design and product for our young people here in the community, as opposed to solely looking at where that firm was located. In addition, the question was raised about why isn't bulk pickup, bulk garbage pickup occurring every week? Why is it occurring every other week? There are a lot of problems with the current garbage pickup contract that is with GFL. There have been a lot of problems in terms of the quality of service writ large. But one of the concerns that has been expressed by a number of folks is the fact that bulk garbage pickup only occurs once every two weeks. The reason for that is because that's one of the terms of the contract. That contract, believe it or not, goes back all the way to 2004. It was a 20-year contract. It's been held by a number of different companies, because a lot of those companies were bought out over the years. So they haven't always had GFL on the sides of the truck. But GFL acquired a contract held by a previous company and so forth that goes all the way back to 2004. And in 2004, the city entered into a 20-year contract. That contract expires this summer, and we did have conversations with GFL about changing some of the terms of that contract to be able to improve service to our residents. But GFL was only willing to do so if that contract were extended for more years. And because of the number of concerns that we've heard about the quality of service, we didn't want to extend that contract any longer than the 20 years, which is already, frankly, way too long for a garbage contract to run. And so instead of trying to renegotiate the terms of that contract and extend that contract, we are going out to bid for a new provider, and we will certainly be pushing and making sure that we have better contractual terms that provide better service for our residents as part of any new contract that the city enters into. Also, wanted to address a question that came up about building a new youth recreation center. There seems to be continued misconception among members of the community that the existing site that we're going to be building a new youth rec center at may involve renovating that school. I'm sure that's something that the architectural firm we hire will at least consider and look at. But the plan all along has been to do new construction for the youth recreation center, not to rehab an existing site. So at the McCarrill School, there is an old school that goes back to the 1910s or 1920s that may be worth at least having the architectural firm look at renovating that as part of a broader project that is—the vast majority of which is new construction. But there's also a sprawling 1950s or 1960s addition there, and I don't think there's any desire to even consider renovating that. That's in very tough shape. And so again, as I've said many times at city council meetings, at a minimum, the vast majority of this youth rec center will be brand-new construction. In all likelihood, the entirety of it will be brand-new construction. The only portion of that existing school that even remotely might be considered for rehab would be the old school, and I think that's unlikely. And then last, and most importantly, I want to speak to the situation at Lancaster, because this is a very serious problem at Lancaster. We are aware of the problems there. And I want to also note that these problems, at least with many residents there, go back several years. And so it's ironic that a former city councilwoman is here saying how important this issue was when she didn't solve it, when she was in the seat on city council, and these problems go back at least that long. But I want to assure folks that your current city councilman, Councilman William Parker, takes this problem very, very seriously. He's been a really strong advocate about improving the quality of life for residents at Lancaster. We've been coming at this issue from two different angles. Number one, we've been working with HUD and telling HUD that because they're involved with this project—and this is a HUD subsidized development—that they need to step up to the plate and do more to protect residents at Lancaster. We've been having calls with HUD about this, at least that I've been on since August. And clearly, HUD is not moving fast enough. They are not taking this seriously. We have had some very strongly worded conversations with HUD. In just the past three or four weeks, we've had two calls with HUD, and we have let them know in no uncertain terms that they are not doing their job adequately in terms of protecting residents at Lancaster. But we're not just relying on HUD. We are also coming at this from the perspective of making sure the city is doing everything in our power to make sure that we can address the problems out there. The main way in which the city regulates rental housing in the city is through requiring landlords to be registered and requiring them to go through inspections to make sure that the units are in livable condition. And we are well aware that the units there are not in livable condition. And we went to court against Lancaster. And we finally, after writing tickets, issuing citations against Lancaster, we finally got a court hearing about two months ago now, and the judge said that she wasn't going to take action because our rental regulation ordinance did not specifically reference co-ops. Even though Lancaster calls itself a co-op, to be honest, it really doesn't operate like a true co-op. And we certainly made that argument to the judge. Nonetheless, she said that she wasn't going to take action because the ordinance—the city ordinance—did not specifically reference the word "co-op." She did say that if we amend that ordinance to include the word "co-op," that she would be open to taking action. And as a result, we came before city council with an amended ordinance that does include the word "co-op." That was approved by city council. So just in the past two or three weeks, that ordinance was amended to include the word "co-op." And as a result, we have now started over again with enforcement against Lancaster. Just last Thursday, a seven-day notice was issued to Lancaster by our code enforcement officers, saying that they have to open up and allow inspections, that they have to be registered as a landlord, they have to be certified as a landlord, and that they have to immediately make sure that they're allowing inspections of those units. If that does not happen, tickets will begin getting issued seven days after that seven-day notice went out. That is this Thursday, two days from now. So if Lancaster's management does not comply with the city ordinance, tickets will begin getting issued against Lancaster and their management company this Thursday. We have reserved in advance a day in court, assuming that these tickets do get issued Thursday, for the first week of April. So we are going to be moving very quickly on this now that we got our ordinance amended to allow us to enforce against Lancaster. So again, look for issues—tickets to be begun—begin to be issued—excuse me. Look for tickets to begin to be issued this Thursday against Lancaster, and then look for us to be in court the first week of April. It would be great if some of the tenants at Lancaster would be willing to join us in court that first week of April, or as soon thereafter as we get a court hearing, because we want to really emphasize to the court how urgent this is, how serious this is, and how all Pontiac residents deserve to live with dignity and respect and be treated as such by their landlords. We take this very, very seriously, and you can count on us, including your councilman William Parker, to continue to fight for you on this issue, because it is unacceptable how the management company and the landlord out there are treating you as residents. And it is not acceptable. We will not tolerate it, and we will continue to fight for you out at Lancaster.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mayor Grimal. I did give you a lot of grace due to the severity of the issue that's at the table. So just at this time, Clerk Doyle, do you have any closing comments?
No comments, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
I'll make it extremely brief. If you can, come to my District 3 community meeting next Monday, the 25th, from 5 to 6. 5 to 6. No, it will be at the Baldwin Center, so 212 Baldwin Avenue. I have a couple flyers if you're interested in coming, if you live in District 3, or if you don't, because a lot of you have housing and landlord and related problems, and I take those things very seriously. I've worked with Councilman Parker. I've helped with a couple ordinance at the cities past. And then I also will hopefully be having Steve Tomcoviak from the Fair Housing—Fair Chance Housing Center from Metropolitan Detroit, who specializes in dealing with some of this stuff. So again, contrary to what's been said, some of us do take this very seriously. I know one of you has my card, but I can hand out a couple more of those. And then if you can, if you're interested, a lot of other tenants' stuff that's happening, I encourage you to come out. So again, that'll be next Monday—or this upcoming Monday, the 25th, at the Baldwin Center, so 212 Baldwin Avenue, from 5 to 6.
Thank you, Councilman Goodman. At this time, Councilwoman James.
Yes, I wanted to, first of all, say that I— Yes, I wanted to, first of all, say that I am very sorry to hear about all the things that are going on at Lancaster. You guys have my full support. I'm the councilwoman for District 4. But if you do plan to, plan any kind of a demonstration, I will be happy to be one of your first volunteers. I also would love to see council, uh, proposal, do a resolution that we could send directly to HUD, you know, protesting the, uh, just the ridiculous treatment that these people have received. So that, that, that's a recommendation, that we do a resolution as a follow-up to this tonight, you know, just condemning them for the behavior that, that they are treating these people. Also, I have a comment on our community engagement. The comments that were made tonight by residents in regards to the Citizen Participation Plan. As you know, CDBG is one of those federal programs that does require citizen participation. And the city is in the process of doing some public engagement around that. But one of the questions that I thought was asked is, are we writing a citizen participation plan? And if we are, I'm concerned that we really should have residents involved in writing the plan as well as the public engagement. I think that we are making it hard on ourselves when we are not opening the door for our residents to have more of an input into these kinds of activities. And here's a perfect one, to be able to get, to pull together a good group of residents in the city and get them engaged in writing that, that, that plan. So I, I have to say that I think we can do more with community engagement than what we're doing. It's good to have just the meetings, but it's even better to get residents involved in advisory groups and other kinds of groups that can give direct information and participation on these kinds of activities. So I'd like to see more of that as we go further with CDBG. In terms of announcements, our Parks, Recreation, and Public Works Subcommittee will meet on Monday, the March 25th, at noon in the, in the Legislative Conference Room, and the public is invited. Also, District 4 Community Council Meeting will meet on next Thursday, March 28th, at the New Mount Maria International Church, located at 313 Walton Boulevard, at 6 PM. That's all my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman James. Councilman Parker, closing comments?
Thank you, Brother President. I just want to add to what the mayor said, what we have, we've been doing with HUD, with Lancaster Village, because that's been on my, on my radar screen since about July of '21. I've been working with and trying to work with those who said they wanted to take care of the problems. I recall that first my contact over there was Ms. Patterson, who y'all understand is no longer there. And I recall I had a conversation with Jackie and some other people there who was trying to get a petition around to get all of us together so we can meet with some of those who could change the issues. I recall that that petition started around in August, and I think that's when some of the threatening behavior started and people getting evicted started and some of the other stuff started. But make no mistake, this issue has been on my heart and on my mind for about three years now. As I said to HUD when I last met with them, people are tired, people are getting discouraged because you're not only playing with the integrity of, of the city, but you're playing with my integrity, which I won't let you do. So if you want yourself to be made, if you want to keep doing what you're doing, no, I'll make you national. And I told them that, and I still stand by that. If they haven't figured some of the problems that they're, that, as they said they would, we're meeting with them, I think, again next week. If they haven't started the process of fixing some of this problem, y'all can join me with Channel 7 and Channel 4 because we'll be right there.
Yeah.
That's what I've said we were gonna do. And I know some of you have probably talked with Lancaster Legal, and some of you probably talked with, I even had some talk with the NAACP lawyers. This issue is not going away, and we're not, we are taking it very seriously. But also you have to make sure you deal, you deal with it legally as well. And so one of the things that we put in the ordinance, I know some of you was concerned about getting evicted, well, we can't stop you, them from trying to evict you, but legally, according to our ordinance, they cannot evict you if the complaint is regarding what you have been talking about here tonight. So I urge you, each and every one of you, and I took some of yours names because it was hard coming up with names. I know a couple of people there. Most of you probably seen my little black truck cruise through the neighborhood every now and then. I do go through and see what's going on. I do have some people there that, that will share with me what's going on over there, but they are still worried about being, being evicted because they know they're talking to me. They've been told not to talk to me, not to talk to council, not to talk to DPW, not to talk to anybody. I know the letters are going around because I got copies of the letters that's going around. And so, and so I'm just saying, we understand where the issue is. This is a serious issue. I know there's families out there that's been separated for years because their kids can't stay where they stay. I know there's people out there that's dealing with health issues because the mold, the lack of maintenance, the, the, the financial issue with people are now who was paying $3 and now have to be paying $3 and $600. All those issues on the table. And, and as the mayor said, we've been talking with HUD, but talk is cheap, and it's about long enough. And so I say all that to say this, if anybody, there's supposed to be a, I believe there's supposed to be a board election on March 25th. I, I will, I, I will, when we last talked with HUD, we asked HUD to send a representative to make sure that, that the election was done decently and in order and according to y'all's bylaws. I said I would be there to be, to add whatever weight I could to make sure that the election takes place according to your bylaws. But we, and the other part of that that needs to take place is you need to communicate to every resident that's out there that if they want to change the board, they gotta do, do it properly. They gotta do it the way, according to the bylaws. There's a, I believe there's a form you're supposed to go by the office and fill out. You need to tell everybody to get by the office, get the form. If there's not a form, if you need somebody to help you with it, call me. I'll get somebody there to help you with it. Also HUD says that some, I know that there's at least three copies of Constitution and bylaws leasing agreements that they've had out there. I've seen at least three. One for the, those that've been over there over 20, and some of those have been over there under 10, and some that's been over there under 5. I know what they're doing out there. And so we're trying to address it legally so that it stays done. I do appreciate you coming down here tonight. I wish you'd come every night because it helps us to be able to, to understand what's going on over there. Because a lot of people, as you said, are very scared because they are being intimidated. We've had people who have been threatened. I moved some people from over there because they, they felt, look, I can't deal with it. I move it. I moved them with my truck, so I know what's going on over there. Trust me, I do. And so I'm saying this to you, it has to be handled legally. I don't know where the money went. Trying to find out where the money went. A lot of people say the whole money came through there, but nobody knows where the money went. And so if you know, and, and in regards to the board, if, I believe if you want to be a part of the board, you have to register as wanting to be a part of the board, right? So if you want to be a part of the board, you need to follow the process and protocol. And I know even now, as they're talking about this election, they're trying to make those people who they say are in a rearage with their rent can't vote. And that's the, we, we're looking into that to make sure that they, that, well, I'm saying, I'm just telling you what I'm told. I can only tell you what I'm told. I don't live there, so I don't know to be true or not. I can tell you what I'm being told. That they're trying to make sure that those who they perceive have not kept up with their rent, they're not legally, they can't vote. And so I don't know how that play out, but I know I'll be there on the 25th to find out how it plays out because, and somebody should be there from HUD, and it, it makes sure because this issue has been going on, for me, it's been going on since 2021, and it's gone on long enough. With that, I'll say it also, for those of you who, who don't want to come down here, you can come to our CDC meeting. I'm trying to get it to where we are, grow where we are right now, and we got close to that last week. But we have a District 5 CDC meeting every second Thursday of every month. It starts at 5 PM. We meet down in the lines then, but I'm thinking if I looked at everybody that was here at this, in this meeting, we done already outgrew that. If I can anticipate that you'll be at our next meeting, so we can put some, some, pen to paper and get some things organized so we can begin to deal with your issue from a district level. Is that all right with everybody? It, well, the next one be April 11th. It would be downstairs. If we have to get some other space to put it, we'll put it. We can look at even putting it for future reference, putting it even at Harrington Hills School in their gym so we can come together as one body. And I do know there was a meeting that was scheduled with the Lancaster residents, November 18th. HUD asked them, asked us to cancel that meeting because they wanted to do a complete campus inspection, which I don't think they completed. I think they only did about 10 or 15 units and said everything was good. Yeah, I understand. I understand. And so.
Just order in the chambers. Order in the chambers.
And, and so, as I just said, this is going on from my perspective. We've been leaning, we've been diligent, we've been understanding, we've been patient, we've been long-suffering, but now we gonna be live. And so with that, I'm done, Brother President.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Parker. I guess my closing comments will be very brief since I gave my time to everyone tonight. Well, I just want to say. I just want to say that Team Pontiac, which is a Special Olympics basketball team in the City of Pontiac, won her ninth championship, state championship this past weekend. So I just want to close out with that. Also for the Lancaster residents, I will touch bases with Councilman Parker to get the dates that, of those meetings, and I'm gonna try to take off work so I can be there along with Councilman Parker to support you guys in that as well. And if you decide to protest, I will also be, will be willing to come out and protest with you guys as well. At this time, I have adjournment. I need a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Parker to adjourn. Clerk Doyle, roll call.
Parker? Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Foyers, no nays, adjournment.
For any of you that want my phone number, please stop. I'll give you a card so you can contact me. For any of those people from Harrington Hills, if you just stay for a minute, I'll go get you my card so you can contact me because I do need to talk with you. Jackie, you should have my number.